Good morning. I'll call the County Board of Commissioners to order on this date of August 14, 2018. Please rise for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're in a different room this morning due to the fact that we have an election going on today in our Commissioner's Room. So we're being recorded and the recording will be posted later for folks to view that. Otherwise, we're normally live streamed, but today is different. You notice at the top of the agenda here, we have our mission: supporting community through quality public service. Any adjustments to the agenda? Maybe you want to pull anything? No? Okay, motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
On your favor? Aye. At this time, we'll have public comment. You will have five minutes. As you know, in the past, we've always allowed you the five minutes to speak. Is anybody other than Urbis, do you have some comments?
Yeah.
Okay, the table there is for you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I thought it was interesting that the budget for the whole garage came in at what it did, at $1.5 million. As I recall back, what it was a line item in the budget, somebody said it was $800,000 to hold a spot, and then it went to $1.2 as the actual budget, and now it's at $1.5. And when I was talking about it before, when the bond was a possibility, I was told that if you delayed in getting that building, getting the bond, it would be at least a 10% increase in costs as the year progressed. That was just kind of an established thing. Things always get more expensive. So now we're talking about a building that came in at $1.5 in your bids, and if it goes up again, because it's going to be 2019, now we're looking at how much money. My question is, what's really necessary? I've asked for a copy of the OSHA report, which is what I understand is driving the rebuild, and I would expect that fairly soon, to see what is the minimum required on that building? If we're talking $1.5 now, or $1.7, or when are we going to be stopped spending money on a garage? When are you going to pull ourselves in here and make something that is what's needed instead of spending some money on an architecturally engineered building that is increasing in cost for what? So your opportunity to do that looks like it's primary. I hope you'll use that to rethink that whole whole garage and do something that is more reflective of what the community needs, not what some engineer wants us to have. My second thought today was about the golf course. And as I read the paper and I'm looking at many of the options and things that were talked about, two things occur to me. One is, did anybody explore why we lost three key people at one time? We know why the first one left, the other two followed suit. What's going on up here? That's fairly unusual to have three people resign all at one time. And then you're talking about one of the options being combining Superior National with Gunson Hills. All I can see there happening is that you end up with a Gunson Hills piece that now the county owns, and now we're going to need to have somebody that we are going to employ to manage that. And that usually means then one employee gets a secretary, and secretary and employee get an office, and now we have a department. I encourage you to stay out of that. That's not what this county needs to do, is to get involved in more of these kinds of expensive endeavors. We're already in too many. And by the way, I would not mind paying my property taxes. I mind paying them for what?
Moving on to the consent agenda. Anyone want to pull anything there? If you're not, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
On your favor? Well, our first item on the agenda is a presentation. And were we waiting for Pat on that?
Yes, Madam Chair, we would wait for Sheriff Eliasson before we start that.
Okay.
I could do... What's that?
I just saw the sheriff go by that door.
Okay. If we wait a minute, he'll be right here.
Right here. Round the ballybooth.
Just decide how to get in. So were you going to start with the budget, or did you want to start with the study?
Well, we had, I think we had Eddie on there, too.
Yep.
Do you want to just get that out? Like, it's all waiting outside from knowing you're going to bring it in.
That's fine, if you want.
I'll go grab him. If he'd be coming on? He's not here yet, so.
Oh.
Go with the bus.
Okay.
Where would you like to start?
In the beginning. Whatever your beginning is, is fine.
You have the narratives?
It did not get in. Do you have a copy of the narrative?
I don't have, I can...
I'll make copies if you're concerned.
Is that for the master planning?
No, this is for, excuse me, this is for the sheriff's office budget.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And we didn't retain the budget, we just cut this.
Right, that's what I was going to do, yeah, for copy. Something's up. So you burnt the midnight candle, working on that?
No, actually, I did a little.
Oh, okay. So it's up to date and ready for presentation? It's looking good, I take it? I jury him. Okay. All right.
Well, I only have, excuse me, two capital requests in the budget for 2019. Everything else basically remains static across the line, from 2018 to 2019. And actually, these are not increases to the budget because the money for these capital requests has already been allocated to the sheriff's vehicle expense and the 911 account for the sheriff's office. So the sheriff's car expense, we are going to enter instead of buying cars ourselves, which we've done in the past, we've purchased squads, we then outfit them ourselves, we do all of that work, and when the end of life for that squad car comes, we have it stripped, and then we sell them. So you won't... Now it's all up to you. So through some research in talking with other sheriffs, I've...
Is there an extra copy? Is there a copy for you?
No, we don't have one.
Is that this? Who is this intended for? Do you need a copy, Molly?
I'll take a copy, sure.
Maybe just grab another one.
So...
Okay. Here we go. And Stacy, you need a copy.
There's three there, so I'll eat two.
Have you changed your ways of doing fleet?
Yes, we are. We're going to enter into a fleet management contract with Enterprise. They are beginning their public safety fleet management branch. Several other sheriff's offices in the state have decided to go with them. And what they do is they procure the vehicles for you, they make sure that they're outfitted, they deliver them to you, and then they take these vehicles. What they do is they buy back our vehicles and then they sell them at auction, but we will get a much better price for our vehicles when they buy them back, as opposed to us selling them ourselves. And I have some reservations about selling squad cars back to the public in Cook County, just because that they are driven hard, you know, and I would feel awful if somebody was to get one of these squad cars and something happened, you know, a tire fell off, or something like that. So I would rather have them sold somewhere else and gone through by a professional company like Enterprise, you know, and detailed and make sure that they are provided with money. So that is the first capital request, and you'll see in the third paragraph that we will need to replace three squad cars next year. That price would be approximately $171,000, and that does not include outfitting the squad cars. That's just the price for the squad car. The outfitting of the squad cars is approximately another $12,000, $13,000 a piece, everything that they need in them now. So with the, with Enterprise, I'm sorry, with Enterprise, we are going to get six new squad cars next year. That price will be $71,000 for six squad cars. And with outfitting them, will be about another $72,000. That's $12,000 a piece for six squad cars. For a total of $143,000, that's what we would pay through Enterprise. If we were to buy the six squad cars on our own and have them outfitted on our own, that would, that cost would be approximately $264,000. So through Enterprise, we would save in the next four years $121,000 on our sheriff's fleet.
I sat down with Pat earlier this year before we bought the three new vehicles when we were talking about working with Enterprise for 2018, and because we already ordered the vehicles, it didn't make sense to do that this year. And if you look at it, you say, "It sounds too good to be true, why wouldn't we do this?" The front end is very good for counties, it's very good for us in this. On the back end, three or four, five years into this, we end up paying about the same amount as we're projected to be paying. So it's, Enterprise is making this appealing on the front end for counties, and on the back end, it gets us about to where we would be anyway with the size of fleet we have. So our costs are going to grow up to where they currently are, but they'll stay there. So over the first three years, we will realize some significant savings, and then we'll be paying about the same amount as we are rotating through that stock. The good news is, is we do save the money in the first couple, three years of the contract. And the better news is that we're always driving newer vehicles than we currently are. And I agree with Pat, disposition of used capital assets is always a questionable thing, especially in a small community, and it's really great that we're hands-off in this deal, the way that works. So when I looked at the numbers, I said, "It's too good to be true, it can't work." We looked at it a little deeper, I said, "Okay, I see where this makes sense for them." And they're incenting this on the front end largely because they're pushing into all, you've seen the Materials Association of Minnesota Counties has talked about Enterprise wanting to work with counties to get into fleet management. And they're doing that as, you know, front-end loss leader to get the business, and then they'll be at the point where they're equalized and they're doing well. But it does make sense for us. We're doing it with law enforcement, proposing with law enforcement first, and we'll take a look at the rest of our car pool, the general county car pool, we'll take a look at that, and then the highway department, we'll take a look at that as a bunch. The only sticking point that we have is the service and repair and the maintenance of the vehicles requires the vehicles to go to a shop that's certified by them, and the closest one is, of course, Duluth. And so we do have to iron that detail out as to how we're going to handle that. Any... But this does make sense, it saves us money in '19, it saves us money in '20, and then it equalizes to about what we would be paying, and we'll be driving newer vehicles.
And one of the big benefits of this fleet management, especially for General Sandstrom, is he spends a lot of time making sure, ordering vehicles, procuring vehicles, making sure that all the equipment is there to have them outfitted, running cars back and forth to Duluth to have, because we go through Emergency Automotive Technologies now to outfit our squad cars, because they are the professional source for this area. So it's, this is where to save you a ton of time by doing this.
Okay, we'll open it up for questions, comments. Commissioner DeCham?
I think it's a good idea. Definitely be driving new vehicles, and I do like the putting the old ones on the street.
Commissioner, questions?
So the old, some of the old squads went into the search and rescue fleet, so what do we do with the search and rescue fleet?
Those will be included, the search and rescue fleet will be included in this, because we needed a minimum of 25 cars, 20 vehicles to go through. So at the sheriff's office, we have 17. We included the search and rescue vehicles, as well as emergency management squad as well.
Okay. So then that means now the search and rescue vehicles will actually be able to open the back door from the inside? That'd be nice.
I'm not making promises.
And we'll be pulling the money out of the same allocated funding that we had before? Okay? And then, is there any opportunity to have a local repair center certified so that we don't have to drive to one? I know that's not under your wheelhouse, but it'd be nice to reach out to some of the local, if they watch the video, just have a conversation.
It's absolutely an option, but it would be up to them to meet the conditions that Enterprise has.
Right. But I would like to get the information to them, so they're aware.
Sure.
And then, I think that this will save on staff in areas that people don't realize. I mean, to do an auction, it takes, Brady disappeared, it takes Brady's staff to do all of that and the paperwork and everything else, so it'll be a savings. I mean, thank you for digging further down the line to know that this isn't a too good to be true offer, that we save on the front end, but then it comes in on the back end. And it'll be nice to not have someone constantly monitoring the fleet to see where you are on mileage and age and repairs and service, to see when it turns over, and it'll be nice to set up, it'll be nice to do this for our entire fleet. So, and this is what we do as a small community. We don't have the 45 staff with individual expertise that can do, we can manage this in a different way that's cost-effective. So thank you, Jeff, and Pat, and whoever else was involved in researching this and figuring it out, and thank you for thinking of the search and rescue fleet.
Well, I agree with what's been said by the others, and I know, you know, our system with hundreds of buses and where we figured it out all different ways, but I think the real advantage is we get updated equipment, safe equipment, and we got to look at the service angle of it and time of our staff, so I think that in and of itself is a real advantage. Thanks for your work on it, and good deal.
I'm taking that chair. So it's lease versus own, is that the issue?
Correct.
Okay. So we're not actually purchasing, you will not own the vehicles?
Yes and no.
Okay.
We are...
Or is it the, own the vehicles, but it's a lease contract?
Right.
So it's like, I mean, it's semantics, probably. I don't know if there are any issues with both semantics. It seems like a very good deal. So my understanding, so the cost per vehicle will increase so dramatically, they'll make up the savings that we get right now? Is that sort of the, you know, higher than?
No. What it is, is when we begin turning over our squads that we own right now, we will get a much better price for them through Enterprise than we would if we sold them at auction. So that is what's taking the front-end price down.
Okay.
The discount on the front end is them taking our fleet and giving us credit against the purchase of the new ones.
Okay.
And by the time you get to the fourth year, we've cycled all of ours through, and we've sent them in the mail there, so then we're paying the lease rate now.
Got it.
So the discount on the front end is the credit for the stuff that we've already bought and paid for.
And the credit for having sold them?
Yep.
Yeah, in the future. Okay. Great, thank you. It seems, it makes a ton of sense to have the people who are in the car business doing cars and vehicles, rather than sheriff's departments doing these and et cetera. So it makes total sense to me. And I love that it saves money. And I also realize that it won't be forever. But it's still, like I say, it saves staff time, and it also saves a certain amount of burden, just head burden, worrying about vehicles. So I like the whole thing. But I agree with Heidi on the person, on the maintenance part. It would be great if one of our local maintenance shows, they're probably already very busy, but it would be nice to keep that locally, just for the wear and tear of the highway for maintenance. Are we doing it, are we doing it, we're doing it in-house now?
The...
The maintenance?
Depending on the...
There's a lot of different...
When we do maintenance, your oil changes, the tires, that's all done along.
Yeah.
If there's something that needs to be done larger, that, you know, it's either under warranty or needs to be dealt with by a dealership, then we have to take it to a dealership.
Anyway.
Yep.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you. So the amount of time that you would keep the car would be up to about four years, or does it go by miles?
Yeah, but it goes both. Yeah, you know, some of our squads, I mean, they can get 100,000 miles put on in two and a half years. Other squads, like the search and rescue squads, I don't know that they'll ever get 100,000 miles on, you know, so it's both, yeah.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? And this doesn't affect the budget, so that's great. It's a good start, thank you for working through all that. That was one question.
That's one. So the next capital request has to do with furniture in the dispatch area. We've had the same furniture for, well, since the place was built in 1997. And between '97 and now, we have become so reliant upon technology that we are running out of space, efficient space to put servers, monitors, I mean, there's probably 20 monitors that the dispatchers have to move, the two radio consoles up there. It's getting to the point where there's just no more space to put anything up there. And it's not, excuse me, it's not very ergonomically designed for the dispatchers, who, you know, they sit there for 12 hours a day, and it's something better for them, benefit them. And in this capital request, I included the statue for the 911 funds, because this is where, this is where the money would be coming from, to pay for the dispatch. The 911 funds are funds that are deposited to the county from the state of Minnesota for 911 service, for telephones. Each county gets a portion of these taxes from 911, from the telephone company, from the state of Minnesota, I'm sorry. So these funds can only be used for very specific things. Furniture and dispatch is one of those specific things. Let's see, you know, we used it for buying the software for our new record management and jail management software, you know, but there's only certain things you can use this number for, this is one of them. So this is, this would not be an addition, even though it's a capital request, it would not be an addition to the sheriff's office budget, if the money is sitting in the 911 funds already, and it keeps, like I said, every year it gets deposited more. Now, there are things that we do pay out of this account. We pay 25%, I think, of Kyle Olberg's salary, because he's GIS, and we need the mapping, and we need, you know, that's tied into 911, that's not a lawful expense. Like I said, software, just furniture, and a few other things that we can purchase out of those funds. We've done some research, and for these types, these types of, these desks, these units are not, they're not cheap, I guess would be the best way to put it. We're probably looking somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000 to redo the dispatch area. Right now, I think, when I look this way, I think we have approximately $87,000 in the 911 fund.
Questions or comments for this particular question? So you don't have a specific amount, or you're requesting a specific amount for sheriff's office?
I put in $20,000 for the capital request, and we had, we had somebody come, we had a company come and look at it earlier this spring. They gave us a quarter of $12,000 for an incomplete project, and we'd like to save it. So I thought it would be, like I said, we don't have an exact number yet, but I would think that, you know, $20,000 would be, would be helpful.
So my next question is, because I know a lot of organizations are just expanding desks now, which changes the equipment and looking to the future and so forth, and the health and wellbeing of our county, particularly dispatchers, if they're spending that kind of time at their desk, 12 hours in a stretch, just to really look after their health and wellbeing is really critical.
Yeah. We have one scanning desk there already. This is for the, I guess, we call it the dispatch two, it's for the second dispatcher we're working with, because it's kind of stuck in the corner, and everything is pretty tight here, so that's easy to look.
And you can fit all the equipment, and, you know, we'll be looking at the old study, so if changes were to be made to the law enforcement center, which obviously will be in the future, these, whatever we invest in these desks and sheriff's office, you know, could be easily translated into a new one, I hope.
I am trying to think of some.
Thank you. Commissioner DeCham?
Hi, well, I think it's a good move, and there's been a lot of studies done where you have, you can have work issues with staff if you don't have proper equipment, and that can be cumbersome and inconvenient, and it's just, has a negative impact on productivity and stress, so good move, especially the economic and...
Commissioner DuPere? So this isn't going to jeopardize any other expenses other than 911 account? And then, are we going to have a chair replacement schedule?
Chair replacement schedule? I forgot my attention.
Not for us. We all sit in these chairs as long as the dispatchers. I mean, it's 24 hours a day, 365 days a year.
We have replaced most of the chairs up there already.
Okay.
And if they're, if they have problems with the chairs or problems with their health because of a chair, we will, yeah, we get it done immediately.
Okay. Cool. Thank you. Commissioner DeCham?
I think it's a good way to spend the money, I can't imagine sitting there for 12 hours.
Some days it goes really fast.
Some days it goes real slow, too.
Okay, we're good on that.
Okay.
Do we want a motion for this now, or do we wait until we get the whole, you know, we don't need to...
We don't want to motion. This is just an overview of the requests. We will be adopting the, the entire budget in September, so we don't want a line item.
Okay, we won't do that today. All righty, and are you waiting for?
I just got a text there here.
Okay. I suppose you're going to request a new chair.
Well. I got another thinker.
You ragged it up so much.
The complex.
It's only once every other year.
Hey, Eddie. Wow, welcome, Eddie. Ladies and gentlemen.
So this is Eddie, Edward when he's in trouble. Although I call him Edward more than Eddie, just kind of used to. He's from Slovakia.
Really? Come a long way.
Yeah. So he went to, the instructor went to Slovakia on a Thursday, got back on a Saturday. I picked him up on a Tuesday. Week and a half later, we started training. So we didn't get to know each other very well before we started training. And we went fourteen weeks, fourteen weeks with a little bit of a break in between. Super humbling experience. You go from a sixteen-year veteran deputy to a rookie dog handler. To the second, to the second oldest person in the class to, to spending more time with him than you do your regular family. But, yeah. This is Eddie, right, no.
And he's a.
Eddie is dual-purpose, what they call dual-purpose. He's narcotics certified and patrol certified, which means he can track, track people down. He can track people, find articles, apprehension and handler protection with a few other things in, in between. But constant, constant work in progress. We try and do some type of training thing every day. He wants it. And Eddie works for, for, no, he works for a toy, which is what he's trying to get right now.
Eddie's basically just a puppy yet.
Yeah, he's so, so much puppy in him that this is what he wants right here. Leave it. Leave it. So this is, this is his reward. And everything he does is for this right here. He just drives him crazy. If we're playing, if we're just playing, playing, he uses a tennis ball. That's kind of exercise, but this one is, kind of puts him in the drive. So everything he does, when we train, everything he does, when he finds drugs, this is what he gets for finding them or any patrol type training we do, this is what he gets at the end. So he really, really, really loves this. When we first started training, he's faster than I am, so you, you give him the toy. Well, needless to say, my hand got in the way of the toy several times before we figured out that.
But you're healing.
Right. Oh. Good old, good old. Sit. Right. So there's no, everything's praised. You praise everything, so you don't yell at him or get mad at him or, which is, well, it's.
Interesting.
A lot of patience, a lot of patience. When we got to, when we got to pick him out, there were three, three dogs that came back from Slovakia. Ramsey County got one and Cold Springs got one. And so they bring all these dogs out and they do a little show for every dog. And then Ramsey County got to pick first and of course they're, Ramsey County's so big. They brought a team of people to pick their dog. And then they picked one. And then I was next and I got to pick Eddie. And I picked Eddie because he was the only one when they brought out that he came to me first and then went out. Ramsey County, one of the Ramsey County guys wanted this dog because he is so social. He's not, not aggressive at all. He's just super friendly. Sit. Sit. No. Sit.
He keeps us all in a play.
Loves to play, loves to play. Right, don't you, don't you, don't you.
So part of the, part of the canine program is, you know, we spent money on, on Eddie and, and the training. But part of the canine program is when, when Eddie retires, he goes to live. How many years of service does he, did he get?
It varies on their health, how much he gets worked. Up here, obviously, it wouldn't be as hard on, on him as a metro dog would be safe. So I would say eight to ten years if, health-wise, if he stays healthy.
Would there be more seasons of harder work like summer with the amount of tourism here or?
It all depends. It all depends. We, we've actually used Eddie, well, we got back mid-June, we have used Eddie probably a dozen times on various things. We've done tracks with him. We've done some more drug studies than tracks. But we've actually done a track, he didn't find the person at the end of the track, but he found the drugs they left on the trail behind, so.
Is that why you were tracking?
Oh, a person, person took it off in the woods.
Okay, but I mean, it was a drug related.
No, it was, it was unknown. We didn't know why the person, they fled.
Okay.
Because it was a clean situation.
So the added benefit of Eddie is that we get you for eight to ten more years.
Maybe we'll retire together.
Has he found drugs in any significant situation of other? He mentioned he found someone to chase and.
Um, no, not, not like huge quantities, if that's what you're saying.
Not yet.
What is, if I had drugs, can you sniff out?
Seven. He could do marijuana, cocaine, crack cocaine, heroin, black tar heroin, methamphetamine, ecstasy. Is that seven? And then so with them, some other drugs, some synthetic drugs have some derivatives of them thing, so.
Okay.
He could possibly alert to some of that other stuff as well.
And you have Narcan specifically for that?
Yes.
That you carry with you?
Yes.
And it has to be checked out the same way as your Narcan?
Yes. Yeah, that's a.
Narcan for him, I don't understand.
If he sniffs out fentanyl and gets an overdose, he needs to be treated also.
And he would get just like an adult dose, the same thing. You can't overdose on Narcan, so.
Okay. So that was part of the donation and the funding that Mr. Deputy Eddie was covering?
We, we were lucky enough to be able to team up with some St. Louis County dogs and Carrollton County dogs and some of the range dogs. So once a month, we'll be able to go to Duluth and train with them guys for a day, which is really good because not only you learn from experienced handlers, but you get to hear on other dogs and see how they work too. So we've done that, we did it in July and we're going to do it next week now, but they tried to get it together every month.
Thank you for stepping up and taking this on. It's a huge responsibility.
A lot more than I thought it would be. It's, I didn't realize how much training goes into one of these dogs. It's just amazing what they can do and when you see them.
What they need.
Yeah. But you know, he's, he's so friendly. He, you know, he lives at home with me. He's not, he's not in a crate all day long at home. He interacts with the family. He plays with my dogs.
Have your kids figured out that their friends can't come over with any rose on their? Not that that happens.
Any questions about him?
So. I remember I worked in the sheriff's department when I was. Is this primary purpose for the county, like search and rescue or is it drugs? I, I guess there isn't.
Well, he's do, he's. No, he's, he's dual-purpose, what's considered. So he, he, he can't search like, say, a bloodhound kennel. It's got to be like a, a fresh scent track. So he couldn't, somebody couldn't be out in the woods for three days and expect him to find him.
Really?
Yeah, it would be like, like say a little kid wandered off from home and we don't know where they, that would be.
Six hours later.
That would be like the type of thing he could do, you know, fairly within hours, not days.
Okay.
Do you work for the border patrol thing at all?
As far as?
If they have a reason to, you know, like go to the border.
Yeah, they have. We, we were up there last week.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Well, thanks so much for taking it on.
Appreciate it.
It's a, it's a lot of fun. I couldn't, couldn't imagine doing it now. This was actually when I got into law enforcement, one of the things I wanted to do. And up here, I didn't think it would ever happen because it's such a small place. And then it did, so it was super exciting. And it came together fast when, when it finally did, but yeah, he's, he's a lot of fun.
How's your shoulders feel?
You know, I actually kind of heard it when we were training because he, he could pull so hard and if you're not paying attention, he'll jerk you, but yeah, you get, you get used to it.
Slovakia, is that the place known for raising?
Yeah, lots of, lots of.
Or not raising, but breeding these.
Lots of, these canines come out of Europe. Actually, most of the, all the dogs pretty much in Minnesota come out of Europe.
Really?
Yep.
Is there no big breeder in the United States?
No. No, Europe has the probably, and it goes back to World War II. They taught us, they told us about the history of it and it goes back to World War II, the proven working bloodlines. They're just phenomenal over there.
Interesting. Them been destroyed by our next election.
So they're fixed, he's fixed then, do I imagine, or any of, any of the dogs that come over are probably fixed?
No, they're, they're not, they're not fixed when they get here. We had him fixed in between the two classes. And they don't, they don't have to be. It doesn't change how they work or, or their drive. But for cancer reasons, they have a lower risk of cancer if they get fixed, so that's why we opted to do that.
Well, thank you for coming and looking at Eddie's.
Thanks for bringing him in.
Very interesting. Good addition to your fleet. Okay, anything else, Pat, for us?
Madam Chair, we have to approve the memorandum of understanding.
Yeah. So we've heard all of that, so we need a motion on memorandum of understanding.
Second seat.
Any more questions or comments? All in favor?
Doesn't have to.
Madam Chair, then the next item will be the, the world jail study master plan report. And of course, this is John Madden, who has been working on this project.
Good morning.
And either you have a hard copy or you've got an electronic copy of the report.
I did it in PowerPoint, not realizing we were going to be in a smaller venue in here. So certainly if you have questions along the way today is a summary of the larger report that we've been working on for the last six months or so. And we did have a chance to meet with the board in the past at a work session to kind of go through our progress of the study. And so we've spent some time since then, just kind of going through the final projection numbers, figuring out some of the operating pieces of it so that we could put together a complete report so that we give the board an opportunity to kind of look at kind of next steps for the law enforcement center and for some of the other things that we looked at through that. So today, I just want to do a quick review of kind of our guiding principles and kind of the project goals. Talk a little bit about process as far as how we determine need and then talk about some of the models that we use to look at the population projections for the jail and then what recommendations we have as well, as kind of what budgets we should be expecting for any sort of changes to the jail and law enforcement center. Just as a reminder for the board, on the next page is what our project goals were. So certainly foremost on there was kind of assess our future space needs for law enforcement and for the jail. Inventory, evaluate the existing facilities and kind of confirm its ability to be expanded. Determine our jail population projections. From those projections, make a recommendation on jail bed and staffing needs in there. Look at some concepts and options for the future and then provide some recommendations for maintenance. And I'll talk a little bit about that as we look at our solution for the facility. We did develop some guiding principles that kind of revolve around those same ideas, which our improvement should be driven by the commitment of the county to provide better service to the public. So as we look at our solutions, certainly fiscal responsibility as a board and looking at the, the most effective and efficient way of doing that. Provide adequate facilities located in the county to meet the long-term needs for the community. Plan for both current and future needs with flexible space for changing programs. Mitigate public and staff safety and risk. Modernize our aging infrastructure and utilize technology to support staff and customers. So how did we go about figuring out our recommendations? Well, there's a number of ways that you can put together population projections for the jail. And so we didn't want to focus specifically on just one. We wanted to look at a number of things and then see if we could draw some conclusions between some of the different factors that go into a jail population. Some of those that we looked at, the most simple one is just looking at your average daily population over time to see what changes might, what we might be able to predict by looking at that. But another thing we wanted to look at was district court filings. So we looked at what our court people, our court folks are doing. We looked at our bookings for the jail to see if we could correlate any sort of changes with that. We looked at inmate days served, average length of stay, and then we even looked at arrest data, not only locally, but also for the state. Some of the things that, in order to look at that data, we needed to kind of figure out what are our assumptions. What we discovered was that we probably wanted to focus on some of the more recent jail data. As you go back further in history, some of that data is suspect and I'll highlight a few of those as we go through that. We did look at jail data from two thousand and six to two thousand and seventeen. We had some numbers in there prior to that and some of our other projections, but we really wanted to focus on that two thousand and six to two thousand and seventeen. I'll explain a little bit about this as we go through, but we developed an average incarceration rate for each model. So you basically take those statistics and figure out what our, the ratio is based on what the model is and that'll kind of give you an idea as far as how we would project into the future. And then we wanted to make sure that we included an additional fifteen percent for a jail management factor, which really means it gives you flexibility in the jail so you're not at a hundred percent occupancy. So you have flexibility on classification and housing of different inmates within the system. And that's a recommendation by the Department of Corrections. That's a pretty standard. It varies usually between ten and fifteen percent, so. One of the first things that we wanted to look at that we didn't really do a, a projection on, but county population sometimes is an indicator. We sometimes get erroneous data if there's decreases in population. But what we found is, is that county population projections, the county is growing, but it's growing at a slow rate. But the adjustment in the graph that you have in front of you really is the two thousand and ten census data. So the, the numbers between two thousand and two thousand and ten are the previous census, I mean, the previous census numbers and what those projections were at that time, two thousand and ten census to a correction at that point in time. And then the numbers moving forward are the, the numbers that we have and then what the state demographic's office is projecting for Cook County. As we get into our jail projections itself, the first one we looked at was average daily population. And so we do have information from when the jail was opened. It opened in two thousand and one with a, with a whopping total of a point zero six average daily population. So it was obviously where the jail started. And things stayed pretty consistent as far as growth, you know, up to two thousand and five. It was when, was the last year that the county didn't board inmates out of the county. And two thousand and six is the first data that we have that has population that was boarded elsewhere. So we have a male population of about two point zero six and a female population of about point six one that was out of the county at that point in time. And so you see a bit of a jump in the numbers at that point. And what we're suspecting is, is that, that the way that Department of Correction tracks data changed at some point in time in that area, and when I was talking to Ben about it, our suspicion is, is that that's just the way the numbers would change and retract at that particular point in time. And the numbers kind of went up and then they go down slightly and then they jump up again. And so what we're suspecting is that's just a natural trend in the numbers. And so as you go to kind of the next page, it's just a graph of that. And you can see that there's a, there's a very specific peak and valley, peak and valley type of thing. So we believe at this point in time, we're in that low spot in projections. And as you look at that trend line in there, it's still, even though there's ups and downs in there, it still tends to trend upward over time. And so the other thing that the next one that we looked. Um and so the other thing that the next one that we looked at was uh bookings. And we see a kind of a similar trend. There's not a lot of information up until we get to two thousand and six. And the numbers from two thousand and six um were fairly steady for a couple of years, and they dropped down and then they jumped back up again. So it's kinda similar to that average daily population that we had talked about. Uh but there's been a steady increase in numbers from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and seventeen. Um and that graph is has a similar thing. The trend line is a little bit lower than our projection line in there, but reasonably about the same. So that trend is going to continue up in the bookings arena as well. Uh we also looked at arrest data, not only for the county, but statewide. Uh interestingly enough, there's been a steady decrease statewide in um the arrest data especially and also in this particular district as well. Uh the arrest data for Cook County mostly followed the state and local trends with the exception of two thousand and fifteen and sixteen. Uh Cook County was actually up, whereas, you know, the statewide projections were down. Not exactly sure what that is. It's could have been a local uplift as far as, you know, um different types of of crime that was reported at that particular time. Uh we did use some of the most recent data for our projections, uh and the graph would to show you what our projections are indicating. By two thousand uh forty, we have a we have a population of around nineteen for the jail. Uh looking at the court filings with the next projection that we looked at, so from uh two thousand and six to two thousand and eleven, there was a decrease in court filings. There was a slight increase in two thousand and twelve, but a steady decline uh during that time. Uh there appears to be an increase in the number of probation and mental health cases, which isn't probably surprising as you look at how most cases are being uh looked at these days. Um and we're really kinda focusing on some of the more recent um information that we have. Uh so if you look at court filings, the trend line and our projection numbers that are following along fairly closely with uh a uh the jail population of about point four in the year twenty forty. Our average length of stay was the next one that we looked at. Sorry, there's a lot of data here. If you look at the whole report, it would be even more, but I tried to keep it a little bit more summarized in here. Um the two thousand and six of data, I'm suspecting there's an error in reporting. It would be kind of odd that it would go from uh a nine point five average length of stay to twenty point four five. And so we kind of excluded that from the data. Uh there's been a steady increase in the average length of stay from two thousand and seven to two thousand and fifteen, um and then there's been a drop in recent years. Uh there's no real information as to why. I have some suspicions that it could be related to diversionary programs that are out there, whether it's circle sentencing or or changes in probation rules and stuff like that. To change your average length of stay. So it could be some some of those uh more recent trends that are impacting our average length of stay. Um and similarly, the graph kinda follows along those same lines. And then we also looked at inmate days served, which um we believe that there's that same error in two thousand and six. And similarly, there's a a decrease in recent years, and it's likely follows along those that same trend of diversionary type programs, alternative types of sentencings. And possibly some changes in probation and those types of things. Um and then again, our graph kinda follows along with our trend line in there as well. So what we did was we took all of that information, talked to the court planning group and the sheriff's department, and determined that our best course of action was to look at the average between all of those models. Not focused specifically on a particular solution, a particular projection in there. And when you look at all the numbers combined, it would tend to suggest that we're looking at a jail population of around twenty four in the year twenty forty. Uh with a a max of thirty in twenty fifty. And those numbers do include that fifteen percent management factor that we were talking about earlier on. And so then we just to kinda give a graphic as to why we believe that the average is probably the best way to go is that if you look at the next graph, it really shows you. That we have a couple of projections that are above the line and a couple of projections that are below that line. We think it's probably prudent to uh stay somewhere in the middle. And really focus on a jail solution that gives the county flexibility in how you populate the jail. And so one of the things that we know about jails is that um it's hard to build those spaces um and add on. So we want to look at a number that seems reasonable based on what we think the population is going to be and then build in flexibility in the jail on how you um occupy those housing units. And so one of the things that we can do is you can um double bunk the, you know, jail in certain to a certain percentage of it. So you could start out with a lower amount of of beds within the facility, but have the capacity in your program spaces and your dayroom spaces to allow you to increase the capacity without increasing the size of the jail. So we really kinda focused on that when we were looking at the size of the jail. So if you go to the next uh slide there, what we did was we took a look at the existing jail and what was in there as part of that kind of facility assessment. What you currently have in the jails, you have a reasonably sized booking area. There are some deficiencies in the booking area related to property storage and kinda inmate processing that we would want to look at increasing the size of that area. The Sally Court is undersized for uh the building as a whole. Uh I think it was undersized when the building was built, to be honest. Um so we would wanna right-size some of those intake and processing areas if we're looking at an expanded program for the jail. Uh the housing units actually work pretty well. The dayrooms that are there are sized appropriately for the types of activities that are going on in those areas. So we don't really see any changes in those two existing housing units. Uh the work release area is actually oversized for what you currently would need for a work release area, so we can right-size that area. Uh but one of the things that we would have to change in a full-time jail facility is the visiting area in there. And so we would wanna increase the size of that, and so what that envisions is um a what's considered a video visiting program in there. So it reduces and at times eliminates the need to move in custody persons from the housing unit to an area where they would uh have the visiting occur. And so you would you would add video monitors in uh housing units and then somebody that's coming to visit with somebody would be in a remote location that would have a another monitor in there. So that way, it increases our safety and security in the jail and allows us the sheriff's department a lot of flexibility in how they manage that program and what types of hours that are available for them. Um the next section in that program is what we would need to add to the jail in order to meet those capacity requirements. And some of the things that are required by the Department of Corrections to operate a full-time jail facility. So what we are proposing is to add fourteen new cells in a new housing area. That would be a combination of single and double bunked um units there. So you would have a total capacity in the new unit of about twenty-three inmates, which obviously you could go from zero to twenty-three. There'd be fourteen cells in there, so it gives you a lot of flexibility in how you occupy those spaces. The multi-purpose room, that is a requirement by the Department of Corrections based on the size of your jail. So a jail that's has twenty-eight to thirty inmates, a five-hundred-square-foot multi-purpose room is what's required by the Department of Corrections. Uh we would have to have some amount of kitchen facilities. Doesn't mean that we're cooking in the jail. It just this this is we have to have space there for food service to occur in a full-time jail. Most uh counties contract that service, but it still needs to have the capability of serving meals from that location. Uh we do need to provide some level of of medical services in the jail. Uh that's could simply be an office and a storage room for meds that, you know, a county health nurse could go there is the way a lot of counties. Uh deal with medications within a jail facility. And then we need an ancillary program room to to meet our Department of Corrections standards on that. So the total size, net size of the jail would be about ninety-nine hundred square feet, so roughly ten thousand square feet of of net space needed to operate a full-time jail facility. In comparison to the roughly four thousand square feet that you currently have in the facility right now. Uh not to um to to look in totality of the whole jail. Uh we know that there are some current deficiencies in the sheriff's department in the um in the deputies area, in their squad room. Uh the current emergency operations center is also a conference room and also a break room. Uh so we did look at some of the space deficiencies within the current law enforcement center and put together a revised uh recommendation as far as how that facility should be expanded and changed. Uh which gives us width of the expanded jail in there, gives us a total size for the jail need of about eighteen thousand four hundred square feet. So one of the things that we had had spent some time on during the study was uh what does this mean for staffing? That's the largest component for a county to take on, a sheriff's department to take on in a full-time facility is those full-time jail staff that need to be there or to run the facility. Ben did a great job of talking to other counties on how they would operate a jail of similar size, came up with the numbers that are here. Uh we would wanna spend a little bit more time with the Department of Corrections just to make sure that that staffing plan is approved, but this is a good benchmark as to where we would need to be. So currently, there are seven uh with the supervisor, there are seven dispatcher jailers in there. We would still continue with that same model where our jailers would also be our dispatchers. Um you're not of a size if you would necessarily need to split that um that position up. But we would need for a jail that is between twenty-five and thirty beds, we would need roughly about ten and a half persons for that. Uh as you move towards a full-time jail facility, there is a requirement for some programming. So one of those officers would would also serve as a jail programmer, which would deal with uh some of the services that you bring into the jail, whether that's um religious programs, whether that's therapy programs. Those types of things that occur within a jail, those are handled by the programming staff. And so you don't really have a need for a full-time person at that at that point in time, but you would need to provide some level of service for them. So looking at adding, you know, roughly about four staff, you know, and again, it isn't, you don't start from eight and go right to twelve. It's kind of a timeline of of as you grow, these positions would have to be added on to. Uh so you get to a certain level of of hurt persons in custody, and then you have to add additional jail staff, and then you have to add some of these other pieces to it as well. So we tried to take that into account as we were looking at uh kind of projections of cost. Uh so I spent some time with the county administrator, with Brady and with the uh the sheriff, kinda talking about what do we have going on today as far as current costs for operating the jail. So this is just staff costs and transportation and boarding costs. So these are the officers that are traveling to other facilities. This is the um the uh boarding costs for being in those facilities. But this doesn't take into consideration his wear and tear on those vehicles, so as you heard the earlier presentation. Um this is it incurs a lot of mileage on vehicles transporting folks back and forth. Uh the numbers that we got for two thousand and nineteen in the budget is roughly a budget of uh four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for uh staff and um for the for the jail. And that includes all of those six um jailer dispatchers that we have. Uh we have a rough projection of about a hundred and forty thousand dollars for transport and boarding costs. Uh gives us a total of about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars total between our staff and our transportation. Um I used um kind of market adjustment, the consumer price index and inflation to kinda come up with how we would project future costs for jailers and for that type of stuff. And so it's roughly about a three percent increase annually for staff costs. So that would be roughly about seventy-three thousand five hundred dollars for staff in twenty twenty. Uh and then a slight increase in transportation, which puts us at about five hundred and sixty, uh six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty. And based on our conversations as far as when you could potentially uh staff a full-time jail facility would be twenty twenty-one. So that would be when I would see your transportation and boarding costs go away, so then you would just be keeping that money in the county. So there's a slight decrease in in costs, and so it's about cash neutral at that point in time. But obviously, as you add staff and inflation and all of that type of stuff, those costs will go up over the years as you add staff uh to the jail. So um so there's a lot of assumptions in here related to uh inflation, related to consumer price index and some of those types of things. So kind of our best shot at, you know, how uh money increases over time. Uh one of the things that we did wanna do is give you a comparison as if the board decides to do nothing and let's continue to transport and board folks uh out of the county. At some point in time, obviously, as those jail population projections increase, your transportation and boarding costs are going to increase as well. And so this is intended to give you an idea as far as what are we currently averaging per inmate for both our transportation costs and our boarding costs and what those totals are. So the average of the years that I had data on suggests that per inmate, you're spending roughly about twenty-five hundred dollars per inmate uh for transportation. Uh you're averaging about a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars for boarding of those prisoners over the years. Um and then just out of curiosity, I wanted to see how much it was costing per bed so that I could kinda compare it to what I've heard others are boarding prisoners for. So it was roughly about fifty dollars a night for boarding, which is about average for what I've for I understand facilities are renting out these days. It's usually it's between fifty and sixty dollars a night for boarding costs in another county's facility. So then I took those numbers and and projected them over time, utilizing those those numbers and then just adding those same inflationary numbers to it. And as your average daily population for the jail for just the boarded part of it, because you have a certain level of capacity in your current jail. And so the uh so I just looked at the numbers that would be boarded out of the county. Uh and those were between nine and up to twenty-two as you go over time, as you look at that uh suggested graph that we have there. So those numbers will be similar to the staffing numbers slightly higher. I think it will cost you more to board out over time if you look at it. As to what those costs are going to continue to increase for boarding inmates out of county. Um so with that, uh I think we had talked recommendations to the county board at our last uh work session about could we expand the current facility? And so that's been our kind of main focus is um on the existing site. And it's not to say that this is the only option that's out there. This is just the one that we landed upon as a way to figure out what our our entry point per cost would be. Um certainly, you know, it wouldn't be um outlined to build a new jail and law enforcement center if there was an ability to um. Uh to get a sell this facility, but we didn't focus on that at this point in time. We just looked at could we expand on to it? We know that the jail uh could be bigger going to the north. It's it was designed originally to be bigger in that direction, if you look at some of the old drawings of the jail. So an expansion of our law enforcement center for additional uh squad and office space and and our emergency operations would work on the north side. And then we would expand the jail towards the um the garage that's there for our search and rescue vehicles. So there's a little bit of a hill that goes up. We would try to avoid, or we would have to relocate the antenna. The antenna is that little white spot that's just or that little square that's just to the north, for those that don't have a colored copy of where we're proposing the jail to expand. And so again, we're not designing it right now. That would be in the kind of the next phase of this would be figure out exactly how it would look there. But that the little block that we have there is roughly seventy-two hundred square feet, which is about how much we would need to add to this new jail to make that work. Um we did spend some time looking at a historical cost per square foot for jail facilities. So the next page has some historical data of various jails that have been built uh in the state of Minnesota and then elsewhere. And so the numbers range on the low side of three hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot to on the high side of about four hundred and eighty-five dollars a square foot. So we're certainly not suggesting that for this facility, we did land upon uh three hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot is our recommended unit cost for uh for the jail. Which assumes, you know, a uh a slight increase in for inflation over time. So again, depending upon when the board would want to go forward with something like this, there's some inflationary numbers that are gonna come into play as well. But we did look at uh construction in twenty twenty, so anytime after twenty twenty, you would have to make some adjustments to some of the numbers. But that three hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot for the jail addition, about two hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot for office addition, some deferred maintenance work. So, you know, over and above uh doing work in the building, we would have to do some other things. The windows are getting done this year, but there's mechanical work and some of those types of things that we would want to do as long as you were doing that renovation work in there. And so we have roughly a a total construction cost a little under three point seven million. Project costs are thirty percent of your construction cost, gives you a total project cost of right around four point eight million dollars to do an addition and renovation to the jail. So a pretty modest addition uh and fairly. So, a pretty modest addition and fairly conservative based on what we were looking at there. What kind of next steps is certainly is to adopt the report and the findings and recommendations. I know that your county administrators has some thoughts related to financing and kind of schedule pieces of that. And then, certainly, to get to a level of detail for the board to feel comfortable with the budget, we would probably want to start a design process to develop that solution to a high level of detail, get the Department of Corrections involved with the solution and make sure that we have a complete design to get, to get our numbers to be a little bit more accurate. So, with that, I would send it back to the chair and see if there's any questions or anything that we can go back to and explain more. There's a lot of detail here, I know there is a roughly fifty to sixty-page report that I shared with the administrator that for those that want to read through all of that data, I don't know if you distributed it at this point in time, but that would certainly be something to take a look at.
Thank you very much. It's a good start to thinking about our future with law enforcement. We'll open it up for questions, starting with Commissioner Deschamps.
What do you think, Pat?
Well, that's a good one. Obviously, I mean, running up and down the road, it's not good for my staff, it's not good for the inmates. Having inmates here gives them a better chance for programming, you know, religious programs or chemical dependency or alcohol dependency programs, as well as, you know, reentry programs as well, you know, when they are released. If you can work with them, have counselors work with them upon reentry, you know, they're looking for a trade or maybe have started, you know, learning some type of trade while they were incarcerated. So, there's that aspect, there's also the aspect of visitation and recidivism. When you can have inmates, you know, when they can have contact with family and friends, you know, that's very big on not only their mood and their well-being while they're in jail, but, you know, there's some aspect of accountability when they're released in as well. So, I, you know, I'm obviously in favor of it because of all the positive things you can do. I realize it's a lot of money, and, you know, I don't know that it's, you know, that we're ever going to make money by having a jail, you know, I don't think that's our intention here. I think our intention is to provide better programming, better space for staff and inmates.
Do you see if we have these ten to fifteen inmates here, projected inmates, that is there any chance that the sentence to serve program could be going again and get these inmates working within the community where they're due?
There's always that chance, you know, that's largely dependent upon the offense and, you know, what the sentence is, but it's always a chance we can get that better incorporated, absolutely.
Yeah, I'd like to see that going again, because I know the recycling center is looking for people, you know, just all the community here, like, um.
I think you all know how I feel, I've been pushing this since I got elected, that this needs to be done. And when we go to our Association of Minnesota Counties, we've all heard numerous times that there is a lot of facilities for inmates and a lot of place to put them. And we've all heard our sheriff tell us that he doesn't like bringing some of our citizens down to dilute for detox and drop them off and not know what happens to them. We actually have a sheriff who cares about his community members and wants to see the better of them, he doesn't want to see them incarcerated again. Looking at the numbers for what it'll cost for staffing and what it will cost for us continuing to transport out of the community, we've got a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollar minimum savings in there, and hopefully that will cover the cost of building the facility and paying for the loan and, you know, hope to break even. We've talked about for years the amount of money that we spend. And the other thing we don't think about is that besides adding the kitchen, when we feed our inmates, we are supporting local businesses doing that. And so, we, when we have them housed somewhere else, we're supporting someone else's food service, we're supporting someone else's pharmacy, we're supporting someone else's medical facilities. And so, it would be nice to keep that here and to keep the contingency. If you have someone here that's receiving help at our clinic, receiving medication from our pharmacy, when they are out of holding, all of that continues without huge changes, without that burden of them having to do everything themselves, which just makes it easier for them to re-enter into the community. So, there's a lot of positives that come out of this. And I'm glad, Pat, that you've taken the step to work on this and look into it and to ask the board to support you on this, because it's not an easy thing to do, it's not a popular thing with the community. The community sometimes just sees us as wanting to spend more money and build bigger, and it's not what this is about. This is about so much more. So, thank you.
Commissioner Richman?
Well, I'd like to thank our staff and your work from your staff and you, John. Seems like you've produced a very good product for us to take a look at, and I think you've covered all of the, you know, kinds of issues and angles and criteria that we need to look at. And I have a tendency to think that we should take care of our own, and there's a lot of reasons for that. And I also have a tendency to look long-term, and if we were to continue the way we are, it's just going to be more and more problematic. So, I think from the long-term, this is going to be, quite frankly, more cost-effective for the kind of results that we can get from it. So, it's not just about spending money, but spending money wisely and having, you know, some effect. And so, good work, and I really like, from my perspective at least, in working on buildings and so forth, that you took sort of a mid-line approach in looking at what we could do, not to skimp a lot, but also not to go that. And I think just looking at the facility and putting it where it's at, it's a good move. I did take a tour with you and the others and served on this committee for a while there, and I think we vetted this pretty well. And I know that it's still a possibility that maybe the Border Patrol or Homeland Security would want to look at the facility, but they would have to come up with a very good price. I do appreciate, I think, the model also that we're not going to build to take in money, we're just size this to take care of our future and be cost-effective in that whole process. So, thank you. Thank you, Pat.
I have a question for Pat. There's some comments that I've heard is that now that we have a bigger facility, we would be bringing transports up here. Would that be ever in the future?
There's always that possibility. There's a significant lack of housing and jail space, that's why we're bringing our inmates up here. If we had extra beds and there's a possibility of doing that, we could take in other inmates as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the gathering of the data, it's really helpful for that first step. And I accept this report, it seems excellent as a first step. I have a lot of questions about the next step, and I would really like, if I was going to be making this decision, I would want to get some narrative like from our current judge, et cetera, about law enforcement strategies for the future. Because it feels like if we start a justice, there's a lot of things happening that hopefully will change the need for jails in the future, that, and to look at that approach along with jails. Obviously, the jails community will always be with us, but I love the idea of a strategy to invest in people while they're here in jail or wherever they are in jail, that would prevent recidivism that you've talked about, Sheriff. And that piece would be really important for me to know too, is how much recidivism is there in our numbers currently? What is that percentage? Because to me, that makes a huge difference when we're talking about building a new jail. And the cost comparison, I haven't quite wrapped my head around that, I don't think that's really in this report, at least I didn't see it. Did I miss something? But, so, Commissioner Kirk, when you talk about the hundred fifty, two hundred thousand being taken care of by the building costs, that seems like not possible, but does that seem like a possibility?
When I look at jail data projections and operating costs on this page, and then look at what it costs to house outside and what it costs for us to add staffing and house locally, I was looking at those two numbers?
Yeah.
Because we have to pay for the building, plus we have to pay for the staff.
Right.
And so, I just wanted to make sure that when we do this, that we can not only support paying for the facility, but we can support having the correct staff to do it. So, that's where the savings is, the lowest savings in here was two thousand twenty-one, and then the savings increases quite significantly.
Okay, so, I guess I did look carefully enough on that. So, building a facility of this, or adding it to the existing facility, does produce a savings, does produce a savings?
Madam Chair, if I could project, that those projections and those operating costs do not include the cost of taking out additional debt.
That's what I was, that's the question, that's the question that I did.
There's some significant pieces that I need to add to the next steps.
Yeah, that's the piece that I didn't see that.
Yeah, it's not in there. What I was looking at is just staffing, the Mona saving, the staffing, how much do we have to pay for a facility, is what I was looking at.
Yep.
And we do need to know how much it is to run the facility and have the maintenance.
So, without that piece, it's really hard for me to really wrap my head around that.
So, Madam Chair, if I could, if you look at the next steps portion of your handout, there are three things that I would add to that. I personally believe that, and you do have the full report, John sent the final directive before Friday afternoon, and I just distributed that via email to you during this meeting, so you can have that for your review, and both of, and add to them as for this meeting so that everybody can see that report as well. But the three steps that I would add, A, we, I would recommend that the board adopt this report as being a completion of the project that we tasked John and his group to do for us. But that sometime yet this year, we do a full cost benefit of all the options. And I appreciate the comment about getting the court's narrative and the judge's opinion about what they see coming down the line for us, because we are looking, we're projecting out twenty years on this, so we do want to take a look down the road of that. So, we want to see a full cost benefit, and there's a lot of things that we haven't included in here. The number of hours that our deputies are on the, are patrolling and not available in the county, how much is that free up time to do better job patrolling, or how does that affect the schedule of the deputies and the patrolling within the county? We haven't looked at any of those pieces yet. We will continue to review the opportunities for partnership with Border Patrol. So, whatever that ends up looking like, we want to fully vet those opportunities before we task anybody with designing, with an architectural design. We want to know what program we're going to be designing before we spend money designing it. And then, the third thing is, is I, in having conversations with the administrator from Chisago County, they just completed a project, and we missed the opportunity a couple of months ago, before they opened it up, they had an opportunity for officials and commissioners to spend a night in the new jail before it was actually commissioned and opened.
Brilliant!
So, I think, I think the only way you actually get to spend a night there now is to actually do the crime so you can spend some time there. I'm not actually recommending that. But he did invite us to come down and visit the facility and go through the process and review the process and the data that they reviewed before they made their decision and the things they learned through that process. So, at some point, I would highly recommend that we take them up on that offer and we do that, when we know what it is we are doing. So that when we get into the technical components of designing this and Department of Corrections requirements and local flavor on that, that you all have an understanding of what those things mean so that we can make an informed decision going forward. So, there's several components in here. I would anticipate that we would get into October or November and we would have a cost benefit that we could go forward with. That sometime before the end of the year, we bring to the board the opportunity to move forward with architectural design, knowing those things. We're, we'll be working with a number of about a hundred thousand dollars to begin the design and review process, and we'll be including that in the two thousand nineteen budget so that we have that there. In September, when we're adopting the preliminary budget, we'll have set money aside so we can start that process, but we won't start it until two thousand nineteen. So, just understand, it's a very, it's a very big project. We will also be looking at our financial management plan, and we took a shot in the dark when we did the financial management plan last year, and we put a much higher number in for this project, because we were looking at, we were shooting for the midpoint between doing nothing and creating a full new criminal justice center. And so, I think we put eight or ten million dollars in as a marker for two thousand twenty-one to do this project. You can see we're proposing scaling way back right now. One of the, one of the things that, if we work something out as a partnership and we bring another agency onboard, we have to be able to do so in a way that has no net change to the public via the county levy. So, John's comments about programming, a project that has the minimal impact and still meets all the requirements, it's the minimal impact on the local taxpayers, but it's also, it also will expand our ability to provide these services. But any other option we design will have to be in partnership so that our pocket cost, as it were, would be very similar to what we're proposing at this point. So, there's, you're not seeing the full cost benefit analysis.
Okay, yeah, I didn't think so, and that's why.
And that's really beyond the scope of what we asked.
Right, of course, I understand that. So, that's why I think this is a great first step.
Those would be the things that I would add to the next steps, there's three other things I would add to that. And those will be, those will be on upcoming agendas. So, today, really, it's the questions of the report that we've been given and the opportunity, except this phase of the process is being completed.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Thank you so much. Appreciate this, a lot to go through in the future, but we'll, we will do it.
I'll make the motion to accept the master plan. I would second that motion.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda will be Vena and Sotia. We're going from the ground to the tower.
So, good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Commissioner. So, as you know, we've been on a quest for four years to improve the way we deliver IT services. A lot of that's been about infrastructure and modernization and getting our whole infrastructure more resilient and redundant so that we can make sure that our network is up and that it's secure. And the next phase of really what we have to do now is about policies, it's about processes, it's about contracts, it's about the things that make all the work we've done so far sustainable. So, this morning, I have a contract and I have three policies. And this is, you'll see more of this from me in the future. I know you've seen a lot of contracts, this is a different one than we usually have done. And I think it addresses a concern that I've had, and I know that a couple of commissioners in the past have expressed concern about. Like many departments in the county, we're pretty much one beat in staff. So, you take somebody like Rowan, who's our radio analyst, he's the only one we have, and he supports eleven towers and over seven hundred radios and pagers. So, when he goes on vacation, he's never really on vacation. We have informally in the past had a couple of people on call, Jeff Nimitz notably, and also Dwayne Navy, who did most of this work in the past. What the action that I'm asking for this morning is to actually, is to actually formalize that relationship with Jeff Nimitz, Jeff Nimitz Consulting, where we actually have a professional contract with him that states expectations, you need to respond within a certain period of time, you need to carry this level of insurance, you need to make sure that you've been approved by the. been approved by the DCA to enter our new buildings, all of those things. We have used him in the past, so that money is already in the budget. We're formalizing that relationship, is all we're doing here, so that to protect both Jeff and ourselves in that relationship, as he does that backup work for Rowan. So my request this morning is simply to approve this professional services contract between Cook County and Jeff Nimitz Consulting to provide those backup on-call services for the radio communications. And I'm taking questions right now.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Rena and Rowan for this proposal. It makes sense to me, you're already doing it. This just formalizes it and it makes it clear. So I think this is a great idea, it's been going on for years, and Jeff Nimitz definitely knows our towers, and it makes total sense, it's good partnering with the county community too.
Good work, yeah, I support this.
County attorney's hand up. Sorry to interrupt. We went back and forth with this draft a few times. When did the change get made that we were contracting with Jeff Nimitz Consulting, the business entity?
It, I just, he asked to, he asked to do that, because that's his business, is that a problem?
I need to make another, I just need to make an addition to the contract, I need to add a little bit of language about making sure that that entity continues as a registered Minnesota business entity, if we're going to contract with it instead of him personally. So that's all I got to do. So I just ask that if commissioners approve this agreement, they approve it in its basic format with the addition of some recommended language by the county attorney.
Okay. So Molly, would this then cover if Jeff Nimitz Consulting had employees, they would be covered under this contract?
Right, the, I mean, the main goal is that the county knows who it's contracting, and is able to hold that entity, whether it's a person or a business entity responsible for the obligations of the contract. And if Jeff Nimitz signs the contract, then he's, he may be personally responsible as the principal for the business entity, but, I mean, I could go on about it, but it's pretty boring.
We have requirements in there about what certifications they need and what security processes, so...
Well, you know, we wouldn't have to have this contract if we just took down all the towers and shut off the radios. But we're not going to.
Okay.
All right. No, that's not the one I'm making, because I'm the tower queen.
Commissioner Duchamp?
Okay.
Motion to approve with attorney's recommendations.
I'll second that. Any more questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye. Molly, I'll send you the briefs, the most recent one after this one.
Okay, and where it's all?
Yeah. Okay, so next up, I have a policy, it's a little bit of an unusual policy, right? It dawned on me that we need this policy. We've talked a lot in recent years about our towers and about co-location on our towers. We have a brand-new tower ordinance that talks about encouraging co-location on our towers, and we've brought it, brought several contracts to you in the last year, which for people who, or for entities who've been on our towers, that have never paid to be on our towers, and there are a few more of those coming. But the question often comes up, and we've got cell service now, and we're continuing to do other towers with entities that exist on our towers, what, how do you, how do you pick a rate? What is the rate? What do you charge people with our towers? And obviously, this isn't the same thing as a widget. It's not, you know, like when we talk about how much it costs per copy, we can put five cents on a copy, and a copy's a copy, right? But towers have varying value, depending on their location, depending on how high you put on, the height you put somebody on the tower, depending on the weight of the equipment that you put on the tower, there are lots and lots of factors. So what this, what this policy seeks to do is try to just basically define two types of tenants. The market-based, the market-based rate that we talked about in there really is, looks at a tenant and says, are you putting equipment up there so you can make a profit? Cell companies fall in that category. Commercial radio stations might fall in that category. You know, things that we don't even know about yet might fall in that category, like when there's transmission for self-driving cars, or whatever else it is that might come in the future. But the whole reason somebody seeks to put equipment up there is for their shareholders, is to make money, is to provide a service that they can charge for. In that case, we're saying we should be applying a market-based trade rate. What's the value of that space to that person? And so far, that's pretty much how we've been approaching cell phone companies. They come up, they have some idea of what the market value is, and they usually throw out a pretty, you know, good number that's based on sort of standard formulas that are out there. And by the way, these formulas are always kind of moving, so that's the other problem with creating a standard rate. So the other, the other group of entities that are out there are more locally based, they're the WTIPs, they're the, they're the, you know, stand vouchers, which we did a contract with before, they're the people that might use space on our tower to support operations in their own business, or provide a surface locally, but they're not making a profit at it, right? So somebody might use a tower to put up an antenna to provide radio contact between their employees, that's what stand vouchers. It also would include many of our partners that are out there, who are other public safety entities that are on our towers currently without contracts. So the DNR, US Forest Service, Border Patrol, NOAA, weather, those entities. How do we, how do we charge them? Obviously, market rate doesn't work. But free doesn't help us support the operations of our, of our towers either. So this would look more at creating an operation, operational cost-based rate. We've been working with that, it's not really relevant, because again, those could change. But they would look at, what are the actual costs of somebody being on that tower? So, you know, snow plowing for that tower, or replacing a light, if it has some light on that tower. Regular structural inspections on that tower, the cost that it takes to maintain operationally that tower, and how do we then divide that among the tenants on that tower? That, so the rate is significantly lower, but it helps us cover our costs, instead of the county subsidizing all of those people. They're all contributing to that operational structure. So that's really what this rates policy seeks to do, is to give us a way to talk about two different groups of people, two different groups of tenants, excuse me, and how we would approach rates in the future.
Do you have anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think just for context, it's important for the commissioners to know and the public to know too, that this, because we have these rate policies, they don't stand alone. This policy will be used in conjunction with the tower request use policy that we already have, tower facility policy, which defines priorities. So just because we have an operational cost model for, say, nonprofits, that doesn't mean we're going to allow or load all of our towers up with nonprofits at the expense of public safety. Public safety is the priority in that policy, and this is to be used in conjunction with that policy. And I think that's an important point when we're talking about how we're applying these rates. Just because we have a rate doesn't mean you're guaranteed a spot on a tower. We have plans and uses for specific towers, and that other policy that we brought to you before lays that out.
It's a really good point. And I guess the point is, is once you have made a request, and we have determined that there's room on that tower, and we need to do a contract, where to begin with determining the rate for that? And that's where this comes in. So there's, I kind of gave it to you out of context, so I appreciate that Rowan gave you the context. I think one line on here that's very important, it's just the very last line of the contract that goes with the operational cost basis rate, is that specific agreements may include services and go of payment. So take somebody like Greater River Energy, for example. Greater River Energy, in some cases, they're on our towers, but in some cases, we're in their buildings, you know, and we're in their building for free, they're on our tower for free, there's, you know, there's an exchange of things. And so we might not actually exchange money, but we might, within our agreement, say, you can be here and we can be there. And the contracts will be able to reflect that, because they all offset operational costs. So we put that in there because that's the reality of the world that we already deal with. Any questions on this at all? It's a little different, but I think it's important to have this as a guideline for us going forward, so that we can know how to proceed in this unknown land that we find ourselves in.
When you do a contract with someone, do you specify the amount of time, like for a year, two years, or how do you contract?
Most of, most of our contracts are five-year contracts with five renewable periods. So many of the contracts, once they're in place, are 20 to 30 years in length. And quite often, particularly on the commercial ones, they have, they have an escalator every year. So like, some of these above gram array, every year, our lease rate goes up 3%. So over that 20 years, it continues to grow and reflects that cost.
Okay. Commissioner Duchamp? Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this policy is really important. We are now in the tower business, and it seems like a good place to start. I can see there be developing new categories too, as you get going. And it was really helpful to give public safety as the priority. It's hard to make those thoughts into the future, if you've got 25, 30-year contracts, or it's hard to project the kind of use this one tower is going to have, and who's going to be on it, and for how long. Project the future, you know, what are our towering going to be for the future? With those kind of lease terms, it's hard. So this whole thing feels like it's hard, in a way, because you don't know what the future brings. However, for today, I can't imagine not having a policy, because how do you, you've got to start somewhere. And otherwise, there's not fairness, and people are making commitments to be on the towers, financial commitments, and I, it's very stressful for staff to be negotiating contracts when there's no policy to backload it, so...
And to your point, a lot of this is about fairness. It's about a consistent approach for where we start, you know?
Right.
Based on the definition of who's requesting it.
And I think that specific agreements may include services and move payments are really important costs, because that, that gives you that flexibility to be, to customize to the client, and that is really important to this whole agreement. So I think that's good, in my opinion, a lot of, a lot of good work.
Commissioner Duchamp?
Well, as a member of the Safety and Transportation, Safety Committee, I've been involved in this and discussions, and appreciate your work. I feel that we, we need to always look at value, you know, what is, what is something worth, even if it's in kind or in service. And this is a good move, I think, and, you know, when we work with the communities and nonprofits or commercial ventures, that we think in terms of value, and then how can we, you know, effectively take care of our maintenance or our future, you know, needs as well. And so it's a good move, and I think we could do this in other areas of budgets as well. It's called value engineering. And you've done some engineering on this in two different levels, and I think, I know you've put a lot of work into it and covered all the angles, and so thank you both. It's a good, good recommendation.
Commissioner Duker? Thank you for putting it together. It's hard to grow up. I mean, we've just always, because we're so small, it's just always been a handshake and a phone call, and it makes it tough for you in your office, and, you know, personalities get involved in everything else, and so I probably wanted this to be done a long time ago, so I'm glad that you put it together, and it's not a ten-page. It's pretty easy for you to go back and refer to this and make it pretty simple. It'd be interesting to see how the community reacts, because everybody wants us to stay the way we were 20 years ago, but I'm glad that we're growing up, and I think this makes it simpler. At first, it may seem like we're putting in more rules and regulations and policies, but I think that this makes it fair, which is what you're really trying to do, is make it fair and make it so that it isn't a simple phone call, it's not you get in the office first, it's not a sheet of paper on someone's desk that you refer to that we did before. So thank you for doing it. I know that it wasn't easy to make it into this format.
Well, I think, you know, the handshake history of things in the county, and I understand how that even happens, but when the people who did the handshake, you know, are no longer there, and then suddenly you have to support something at 2:00 in the morning, you don't even know whether you're supposed to.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of liability for the county and all of this, just getting things into contracts, so that we know who's responsible for what, and who has insurance, and I know I'm speaking to Molly, so I'm here. But we, you know, it's just very important to me, regardless of the revenue. But there is revenue involved, and there are costs involved, and as we've talked about many times, you know, this is our opportunity to go from a huge liability to the county that we have to continue to invest in because of our public safety communication, to making it more of a strategic asset, to the benefit of many people in the county. So this is just, I think, one more building block that we need...
It makes my job easier, when someone calls me and says, oh, Rowan wouldn't let me on the tower. Well, I know we have a policy, so... Blame Rowan for everything. But I mean, for us as commissioners, we can say we have a policy for that, there's a reason for it, and, you know, without a doubt, we know that we are doing everything we can, the way we're supposed to do it, in the most fair way to do it. So thank you for making my job easier, too. Commissioner Duchamp?
Yeah, thanks for getting this together. I know we have some, and we can get people on your contract now, we do have some towers that need to be replaced, and I know, you know, in kind, it doesn't help us pay for our towers.
Oh, they're kind of expensive, and you have to replace them.
People think they have the right to be on the towers, actually, they can sign a contract like everybody else.
Okay, motion to approve.
Support.
Any more questions, comments? All in favor? Next. Thanks, Rowan. Thanks, Molly. He's going to leave, no, I'm still going.
I'll be back.
Oh, okay. We're going to go on break, you know?
Waiting for my chair to come up again.
So there are a lot of policies that need to be written. There are many of them that maybe were on the books or not, that are very out of date. This is one that I was working on a couple of years ago. There's actually two of these policies. One is Internet and Electronic Mail Acceptable Use Policy, which is for all employees, the scope of it actually is all employees and elected officials who use county-provided tools, including Internet here within our county buildings, and email. What's appropriate to use these, you know, what's appropriate to do with our email, like probably not using it as your contact or your bank accounts is probably not a good idea. And it goes through, and it, it talks about roles and responsibilities, particularly about how we use it, our email accounts and Internet for personal use, as what you should and shouldn't do, and what's acceptable and what isn't. So it's something certainly that all of our new employees have been given when they come in. What's kind of made me get back to it and review it again from a few years ago was a couple of things. couple of things. One, we're going to be adding several employees to our email who are not usual office employees, who aren't used to having these county resources in the highway department and recycling and in the maintenance areas. So I want to make sure that they understand how to use these tools appropriately. So that brought me back here and reviewed it more time. The other piece in the first policy, the Internet and Electronic Acceptable Mail Use Policy, is this idea of retention of email, which Molly and I have been having a lot of discussion about how do we get our data managed better in terms of state retention laws by the different departments. So we added language in here about email retention and responsibilities for that. And I'm fully aware, if you were to ask me, are we doing that today? We are not, but what we need to do is start with a policy that gives us the authority to do that with departments. And then from there, Molly and I will start working with individual departments to get our, I think, better data retention going. So this sets the groundwork for that. One of the things that I would like to do, this policy is approved today, is probably starting in September. I'll go department by department and if there are department meetings, talk about this policy, make sure people understand it, and we're going to have every employee sign the sheet on the back saying that they agree to those terms. Then this will become part of my annual operational calendar that once a year, I'll review it, make sure it's still relevant. If there needs to be changes, we'll bring them here to amend it. And if there don't need to be changes, or if they do, we will then go back to employees, you know, distribute the policy, ask them to read it again and re-sign. It's become an annual event to keep this in people's forefront of their minds of what's appropriate to use. So I don't know if you have specific questions about this?
Apply to the commissioners also?
Yes, it does.
Okay. You'll meet with us?
Yes, I can. I could certainly do that.
Agreed.
That would be happy to do that.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would have an overall screening by personnel, maybe? I'm just, I'm questioning the word should. Does should hold up in a sort of a personnel document, a personal use of, you know? Is the word should?
I like shall.
Okay, shall implies that you will, yeah. I would prefer that word being changed. It just seemed like there were a lot of unnecessary costs in there, but other than that, it's extremely complicated. And it only gets complicated when it's used for personal use on a company. It's a company tool being used for personal use and that's where I have a big question mark.
Can you specifically?
Well, like, how much personal use should you have on a company tool?
Should. Well, you know, I always see it like before there was email and you're in an office and you have.
You take a phone call from your.
You take a phone call.
Got it, got it, got it.
I think sometimes people also, if you look at this, would put it on IT's responsibility to monitor this and I don't think that's really our role. I see it, I see it more as department heads who are managing their employees need to be aware that if there are productivity issues because their employees are spending too much time doing something on the Internet or something, that that's more their responsibility. And I think the policy reflects that. These are guidelines. No, you shouldn't be running your own business on the county site. And people need to also understand that everything that happens on email is potentially public information. So a lot of it is complicated for that reason, you know, if you are putting a lot of stuff out there and personal stuff, somebody can request that and that can become very public. So.
It's good to have that in the document, spelling it all out.
This is actually, I didn't make all of this up, obviously. It's a combination of different ones that I've seen, but this is pretty standard protocol for language.
It's helpful to know, too.
I'm pretty sure if you Googled this kind of a policy, you would find, you wouldn't find all of it, but you'd find it in different ones, pieces of it. There's a lot of very, very standard language in here that's across many government policies. And that's why I think it's important to also go to departments and walk through some of the, especially the end user policy pieces, make sure that people are clear why those things are there.
Commissioner Dushan?
Well, it's good. I know I've worked in an environment where one of the first schools to have email within the late eighties and we had to develop this right away because, you know, the potential for abuse of the system is high. And I think getting it closer to where the supervisor is is to the advantage because if there are problems, then you don't have a policy. You can't deal with it as a supervisor, so long overdue. Thank you.
Commissioner Duker?
So new employees start, will they come to you or unless just in another part of their package?
This would be, and that's a good question. Right now, it's HR that actually distributes this and takes the signatures.
I just think this is really, really important and I'd hate for it to get lost in the three days of education or five days of education you need when you get hired. I mean, there's so many things that we say, oh, does this get added to HR, does this get added to HR? And I'm really concerned about, pretty soon it's going to take two weeks to get somebody to start from the day they're very new with all the stuff they have to sign, but this is really important.
It really is another, and I keep talking about liability issues for the county, but this is, really tries to address that.
Yeah, I would hope that people read it and don't just sign it and say they acknowledge it because some of us here have had the Republican Senate subpoena us for our electronics and so it wasn't just the county email that went to them, so it's big. It's important, so thank you.
Thanks, Rena.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Changing the shoulds and the shalls if necessary.
Shoulds to shalls.
All right, the other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
We didn't get a second.
Support.
Support. Okay, I thought you did.
The other, the other policy behind this is, actually goes with this one. So if you're in a department like the Attorney's Office or Sheriff's Office that handles a specific kind of data known as criminal justice information, CJI, which has a very specific definition, there's also data restrictions around what you do with that data and how you handle that data. And that it should never be emailed, for example. It should only exist in a record management system like our searchers system and how that's managed. So this policy also was actually written a few years ago and they use it in the Sheriff's Department with new folks over there, just to make sure that people know how to handle this special data. This is actually a policy that is really required by the BCA around that. So we've had this in place for a while, but it's never been formally approved, so I bring it here today to ask you to do that.
I'll make that motion. A second.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Rena.
Thank you all so much.
Forward to more policies and procedures.
Oh, yeah, they're pretty exciting.
I was just really glad you guys didn't have me follow the dog, you know, because I never like follow dogs and kids.
You did follow the dog.
Pet the dog and then approve the policy, doesn't that sound fun?
Anyway, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Would anyone like a five-minute break? Yes, please.
There's treats over there.
Okay, I'm lighting them up.
Isn't there some?
Yeah.
I didn't know if my knee was going to follow me.
Absolutely.
Long night, too, huh?
Three and five are going to be heavy.
That's good.
That's good.
Yeah. It could be getting better than I wanted. Yeah. How are you doing? Good, I'm doing well.
Yep. Now we, I feel better now.
Do you know all this Bureau of Crime stuff?
Oh, good. Is that the number you showed?
Yeah. You got campaign posters out there everywhere?
Oh, yes, the yard signs. Well, it's over now. Wait for the results.
The cameras probably still.
A good turnout, at least.
I think so. I think the absentees.
I think they're saying, two districts are getting a lot of votes.
It is, though. Mailings.
Wow. Good inside.
I know I worked one of the elections and it was presidential election and there were like 15% of the people that didn't vote in the primary. The people that were politically active didn't even bother on the mail ballot.
Well, congratulations on being loony, Molly.
That was such a sham. I should have won.
So now you have something serious to deal with.
You really were best and.
Border Patrol.
As you well have it is.
Said Border Patrol of Homeland Security.
It's just based on a clause.
Homeland Security is kind of too border patrol and.
Only two of us showed up.
So we're talking border patrol.
So I got last.
Serious? I don't know. Yes. You know, I guess.
Oh, well.
I'm joking. It's judged, it's judged by a clause and I didn't have any of them handed there.
Lease agreement?
Down for.
Oh, likely twenty-year lease agreement.
Yeah, the other guy, he's got nine kids and he had like four of them there in an odd of ten.
If we get to the point that we have any.
That would be good.
So it's not a title that's based on skill level. It's a popularity.
That's what that radio is. Are working.
Yeah.
You can repost it to be on your Facebook page and we'll update you.
Yeah, that would be, I see that now.
Yeah, I guess.
I'm going to do it again next year. I hope forever.
Potentially. The rain's coming, I was in town.
Depends on how it goes.
I got to town right before the rain.
We would be in control more than we would be, I mean, we would have, you'd think we'd be in a advantageous situation because there are only other options, to build or not have it at all.
There are probably some decent ones here.
Yes.
But there's still lots of numbers.
Technically, it's the one line that's the same because it doesn't have.
Can I run to the restroom and then come back?
I don't remember.
You're walking, you're going to go back.
Oh, he's good trees, he's good helping trees. Thank him, Aaron.
Yeah, you know, they're not that bad either.
No.
Got him at the car.
You have to like it.
When are you playing at church again?
Twenty-sixth. You want to play it?
Is that going to be the?
Twenty-sixth, yep. Not this coming Sunday, but the following Sunday.
I think that'll be that blended?
No, it's not a blended. I don't know if it's going to, but it's, we're going to do the folk mass as long as we can find a cancer and, I see, I didn't talk to Eric, but I talked to his wife and she was going to give him the message.
Okay.
It's fine.
Yeah, I have to talk to twenty-sixth.
I think that's the. I don't have my phone. Don't put her on the spot. Is it legal?
Yeah, well, I think I'm going to be around that day.
Good, okay. We did such a good job the last time we did that, so let's do it again.
Yeah. Oh, we played music together.
Sweet.
Yep.
Yeah, I was up at the care center yesterday helping people vote and I saw your name. I'm like, oh, yeah, you're still doing the Sundays.
Yeah, but I get, when I'm in town, which is usually two or three times, sometimes four times a month, I enjoy it.
I know what they say.
Oh, they seem to have a.
Yeah, good luck.
With the change in.
My boat seat is a lot more comfortable than this thing and it's really old.
Sometimes it's like, she's getting her kid.
Is it really?
I think it is. No, excuse me, eight.
Yes, I know.
It's, you see people age more and more, she's just got physical limitations. I used to usually sell chairs when I was.
One hand.
Hey, what?
Yeah.
That did it. For now.
I'm very sensitive to my balance and position. I'm an old athlete. No. Wow.
Give it a few whacks.
Well, it makes a difference in your comfort because of your weight. I got a bad back. Makes a big difference. We will sit up straight and put my feet on the floor.
Thanks, everybody's taking a chance at the break, we just chairs. Or didn't move anymore.
To try for the ones.
Musical chairs, it came in place.
Did you get a better one, Mickey?
Yeah. Where's this, this chair?
Yes. I want you to believe in me.
Mickey, excellent. Very strange chair, yeah, right?
There's one worse.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're all back. Yeah, we're all ready to go to.
Yeah, twenty years doesn't seem like forever anymore, does it?
On the agenda?
Mike, pleasure to meet you.
Judy, no?
Great, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Brazil Board. My request today is to approve the post advertising for a maintenance technician/custodian in our maintenance department. This person would primarily work at the YMCA. This position is replacing two custodian positions at YMCA. We're hoping to replace that with one full-time maintenance slash custodian position. Maintenance being doing a little more related to pool maintenance.
Okay. That would be something that they would need to sign on, I take it?
There, yeah, we would post it with like pool certification desired, but chances are they would need to get training on being certified to maintain the pool.
In minor maintenance? Nothing major versus?
Nothing major, but minor mechanical maintenance versus the previous positions were custodial, which were pretty much pick up and cleaning. This would be minor repairs.
Doorknobs, that can.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, open up for questions or comments, Commissioner Dushan?
No comments.
Commissioner Duker?
We're replacing two full-time with one full-time.
Yes.
Can you repeat that like five times because we often hear that we replace one with more. So this is nice.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Duker, if I could, we had previously had one full-time and an additional eight hours of part-time. And that's what we're proposing that we would go back to. This past year, we have actually had allocated because we could not find that eight-hour person. We had 1.5 FTE allocated to the YMCA and we would not specifically ask for the maintenance technical component, which is why we're working on the job description to make sure that we get somebody that has that. So yes, we are reducing the allocation of all of us.
It's just nice because I always hear, why do you keep adding more and more? And we're taking a look, we have a situation where we were able to step back and take a look, cross our fingers that we get the right person and that we're able to follow through on this. So anybody out there, if you know someone with the experience listed, please encourage them to apply. Great job.
Well, I have some concerns. I'm more aligned as a county rep to rely and I think we're meeting this Friday, but we have some issues there with maintenance and I don't know if this will take care of it, but. we've had a lot of complaints from the public on maintenance of the building. Specific, and I, maybe they're more renovated in nature because of the mold escaping, showers and so forth, and of course, that's been obvious from the very beginning. I was involved in the checkout of that building, punch-up. So I, I would hope that maybe by adding the maintenance aspect to this, that that will be an appropriate kind of issue, but I don't think that we were wasting our hours, I think we still have some cleanliness issues there, and so I don't want to, that to go away without noting that that is a concern for the public and our staff there as well as for myself.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I am very much in favor of this and if it's not enough, we'll get it again, but it makes sense to me. So I would make the motion to approve the posting, advertise maintenance technician custodian opening in the maintenance department.
Support. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Hi.
I'm opposed.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Tim Nelson.
Great, Madam Chair, Commissioners, just have the one item before you today, and that's the replacement of recycling trailer, it's the multi-bin green drop-off trailers. Earlier this year, it came before you and we purchased a new one to add to the fleet to use over at the Hovland site and that's, that's worked really well. The, the one problem that we run into, you know, we always try to make these trailers go as, as absolutely long as we possibly can. And we've worked with Protean for, on the design to try to extend out and beef up the, the flatbed, what we run into is very heavy materials that go and weigh down on it and then a lot of the road salt and such that, that impacts the, the frames and such, and we end up with sagging in those frames that we can only weld up so many times, and that's where we're at with another one of ours. We'd switched from the metal to the poly bins to lighten the load, and we've also worked with them to add, you know, new latch things to keep the lids up. You know, so it's easier for folks to use in that sense, so we've come to the point in time where we have another trailer that's, that's falling apart to the extent that it's no longer really roadworthy, and so we would like to go ahead and replace that trailer, I have a quote in front of you for a replacement trailer, and we would intend to take it out of landfill, future landfill funds that we acquired the previous trailer for, and as such, then it would not be an adverse impact on, on this year's budget. In addition to that cost, we, we're working with them to get a good undercoating to be able to protect the, the trailer as well, so not only looking for the cost of the trailer in there, but also the fifteen hundred for the undercoating protection as well.
And this new trailer would have the alarms that would keep the?
Yes.
Okay, good. It's, it's getting better at the Opti site. The fellow there does a good job of trying to help people out when, when it gets too full, too.
Madam Chair, we're getting a lot of materials, one of the biggest increases in the amount of materials coming in into any particular site is the Opti site right now.
Right, yeah, I don't know what you can do about it other than purchase another trailer in the future.
Well, yeah, it's, it's, some of the businesses we're trying to work with to see if we can't just funnel that directly to the center instead of filling up those trailers.
Oh, okay, good idea. Okay, questions or comments?
Commissioner Stevens? Thank you, Madam Chair. My only question or comment is about where these trailers come in the budget process, because we funded the last one with the future landfill of funding, or both funding this one with the future landfill. Is, you know, because we're trying to get all capital expenses, because twenty thousand isn't a small expense, as part of our budgeting process, and even if it's going to be coming out of that, to have it planned, so that we don't just, so we have a plan for that, future landfill money. And maybe if the plan is to keep funding the trailers out of it, but to have a, and I know it's evolving, so it's like, maybe now we can figure it that way, we know, particularly with the growth in Opti and we can plan for some growth and try to manage it under the, manage it under the budget process, so it's not like an emergency expense as it comes up. But I understand this.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Stevens, that is absolutely right, we, we try to keep these, the trailers and the equipment going as, as absolutely long as we can, and so at the end of each year during the budget cycle, I, I work with the rank up there at the recycling center and say, okay, what, what, do we anticipate any, any pieces of equipment going down and such, and we always try, well, I think we can eke another year out of it, especially, you know, understanding the concerns that we want to keep the costs down as far as the, the budget numbers go.
Right.
And we, we have probably enough in that, that existing fund to, to cover the replacement of, of one set of each equipment that we have there in the center. And so if, as long as the, we've had the concerns with the, with the budgets, it's, it's been kind of my little go-to, so we don't have that adverse impact, but you're right, and and had that conversations with the administrator on that, that we should actually reflect that in, in the budget. It's just gonna mean an increase, because, you know, I, I do have the life cycles kind of pegged out on some of the major equipment that we, that we do have in there. Some of them are over fifty thousand dollars and such, and so I can plug those in, I do have those, those, the dates and the expected lifetime and such. But we always end up running them much, much longer than, than what the natural life cycles are, just because we're so good up there at, at maintenance and keeping the new equipment going, so.
So it sounds like the strategy is to spend less in the long run, and sometimes capital planning is about spending less in the long run, but it sounds like your plan is spending less in the long run is working so far, but it's still nice to have a plan for that, or even to have that conversation during the budget season, which is what we're doing right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Deschamps?
Uh, I think it's a good idea to have the T-Flex bed liner, I'm sure that they have to the life of it, especially if it's new.
Commissioner Duke? So have you added funds to your 2019 budget to increase the future landfill to cover this?
To replenish that, Madam Chair, Commissioner Duke, I, I have not. The expectations are actually that we, we don't really have, I, I, we don't anticipate the need for that fund in, within the next five years or so. So again, because of concerns about the budgets and the numbers that we're being asked to present and trying to be sensitive to that, I've, I've kept, you know, that out of, of the budget process, but it certainly is an impact. Each, each pieces of equipment that we have does take that out of that fund, and we understand that those funds can be depleted, and if, if the board wants, we can, we can definitely plug that into the budget numbers, but understanding that it, it will definitely have an impact.
Not even if we do the whole twenty, if we do half of it, just to be putting it back in there, I mean, this is why our fund balance has the brakes on it, because we kept saying we don't really need it and we're in a recession and we came up with all the reasoning in the world and when an emergency happens. So, just something to consider.
Commissioner Deschamps?
How many years do you get out of these trailers?
About ten to twelve.
That's pretty good. Do you drag anything up and down the shore in the middle of winter with the stuff they put on it now, you're lucky you get that out alone, so.
Having extra protection in the bottom helps, yeah, just like doing it to our cars.
Exactly, Madam Chair.
Motion to approve with the T-Fux bed liner coating.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Thanks to Mary, that counts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, we're all ready to move on? What's somebody having? Budget review from the Highway Department, Kristen and Lisa.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, colleagues and members of the public. This morning, we're here with an overview of the ways in which the Highway Department supports the Cook County community through quality public service. If you go on to page two of the Highway Department budget handout, you will see a history of the road and bridge levy here in Cook County. Today, we're here to talk about an average of twenty-five percent of Cook County property taxes. And for 2019, we're shifting a few priorities to minimize the preliminary levy request to two point five percent or fifty-six thousand dollars. The next chart will review what we're looking at for revenue sources in 2019. One of the, we are one of the departments that's largely supported by outside sources, which enables Cook County to sustain levels of summer and winter maintenance services while offsetting the impact on local taxpayers for the same. In 2019, seventy-three percent of your revenues come from Minnesota's Highway User Tax Distribution Fund for construction and maintenance support, the county's transportation sales tax for designated projects, and a one-time eight-hundred-thousand-dollar federal grant for a gun plant trail project that we have in next year's construction program. Moving on to the expenditures of the Highway Department in the form of Highway Department services, over half of the revenues from the prior page translate to road construction projects and their associated design and permitting costs. For 2019, we're proposing a decrease in the personnel budget in favor of maintenance supplies, I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. And thanks to the experience of your mechanics, foreman, and a dedicated accountant here at Cook County, we've worked together to reduce Cook County's equipment program to less than four percent of the preliminary 2019 road and bridge budget. I mentioned that we're looking at a shift in priorities for 2019 to minimize the request in levy increase. And we're also, in other forums, you've probably heard me talk about increasing next year's chloride application. And we have done that as part of this budget. You will see an overview of 2017 maintenance supplies compared to what we're proposing for 2019. We might recall that 2017 was the year in which we didn't chloride our roads, we made a little bit of a start here in 2018, but we're continuing to hear from many constituents that we should consider increasing the chloride application for the 2019 budget, which we have done. Next year's chloride program of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars brings us closer to the level of service that we provided in 2016. Optimally, we would increase the chloride program another twenty to thirty thousand to cover all of the roads that were last covered in 2016. And if we are hearing from many constituents that there are good reasons for chloriding roads besides the benefits to road maintenance, we would be looking at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand to chloride all gravel roads in Cook County. That's not in the budget, I don't believe we've ever done that. In some neighborhoods, we do hear questions or concerns about potentially negative impacts of chloride, so we have not budgeted for chloride on all roads in the past. But if we could raise that to hundred and ninety to two-hundred thousand, I think that would get us closer to where we want to be. And the other area I went for proposing a shift in priorities with respect to maintenance supplies is shifting some funds from the elimination of the former maintenance supervisor position to additional Class One, which is the gravel that we use for resurfacing our gravel roads. The budget that we've shown here would cover an additional three or four miles compared to what we were able to re-gravel in years past. Moving on to page six, this chart represents Cook County's increase in road and bridge levy funds compared to the department's personnel budget for the same years. We're showing a net decrease in 2019 through the elimination of the maintenance supervisor position, as well as the elimination of engineers' benefits. The 2019 budget does include two currently vacant positions, one being the maintenance worker one, which has been filled as a summer worker in the past. With the elimination of the maintenance supervisor position and the foreman spending more of his time assisting the engineer, we are looking for more boots on the ground. The second vacancy is the currently posted engineering technician position, which we really need to deliver next year's program in particular. And the different, different options for recruiting for that position, as well as the maintenance worker one, are expected to go before the Personnel Committee as well as the Board this fall. Moving on to equipment, this is our most significant change for 2019. The draft 2019 budget jumps to the conclusion that we will adopt revisions to the current equipment policy before the final levy is set. We've discussed this at the department level and at the Highway Advisory Committee, we'll be bringing forward finalized recommendations for Cook County's equipment replacement program to the September Highway Advisory Committee meeting, as well as the Board later this fall. Since the implementation of Cook County's equipment policy, we've learned from the experience of our own staff, we've learned from the experience of other counties, and by working together over the past several months, we've come up with what we believe to be more economical methodologies for an equipment program for a rural county like Cook County. We will be including mileage and condition as two of the factors to rate our fleet moving forward, and this draft budget represents over two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars in taxpayer savings in 2019. But again, jump to the conclusion that we will be relooking at our equipment policy before January. For equipment, we do have mini excavator payoff and greater financing. When we discussed Cook County's fleet, we identified pieces of equipment that we believe we will be selling, some things that aren't getting the use that we might have expected at the time they were purchased. But the only piece of equipment in our fleet that we could use, that we don't currently have, is a utility tractor, something a little more mobile to help us do sidewalk maintenance, for example, as well as some of those other smaller tasks compared to the heavy equipment that we use. We are looking at repairing one of the pickups in our fleet as opposed to replacing it. It only has seventy-seven thousand miles, so we put five thousand dollars in for a new budget, for, for a new engine to keep that pickup on the road. And fuel is actually one of our largest equipment expenditures, we're looking at about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in fuel costs if the price stays the same for 2019. We do have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the draft budget for capital replacement reserves. Again, we have cut Cook County's equipment program by two-hundred-and-eighty thousand. However, we believe it's still responsible to maintain some level of capital equipment reserves in the event of an unexpected breakdown or to prepare us for the future.
And to be clear, that reduction of two-hundred-and-eighty is after we have set aside the reserves.
Oh, hmm, that's helpful, that is helpful.
Moving on to one of the most exciting announcements for the 2019 budget is the projects that we are looking forward to. Not unlike other departments here in Cook County, or not unlike other county highway departments in Minnesota, there are more needs than available funds, and we will tackle that bigger picture question of how we set priorities as part of the impending transportation plan effort, but at the same time, we need a plan for next year. I mentioned that we received a one-time federal grant to deliver gun plant trail improvements in 2019. We have self-shore drive in the construction program funded by our state aid funds at a cost of a little over two million dollars to reconstruct and replace the culverts on that rough road. a cost of a little over $2 million to reconstruct and replace the culverts on that rough road. We've talked about our bridge needs at past meetings, and we are moving forward with the design services with the hope of construction administration of the CASA-1 box culvert replacement at Two Island River. We need to pave the section of Mineral Center Road that was delayed from this year's bid. Hopefully, blacktop prices will stabilize by the springtime bidding season next year. And also, the bond project, Moose Valley Road, the culvert replacement at Carlson Creek. Those are the five projects that we're looking at for construction in 2019. We are planning to recruit that fourth engineering employee, augmented with some consultant assistance is how we're going to deliver this construction program in excess of $5.5 million. One of our highest priorities in town, speaking of other projects and working ahead to future years, is the alternatives analysis and final design for Fifth Avenue West. You will see that in next year's budget. Work will continue preparing for the County Road 45 project with the engineering costs being funded by the 2018 bond. And we are, we'll be looking for a more cost-effective alternative for the cross-river bridge replacement at Conflint Lake. So those are the projects that we will be working ahead on as part of the 2019 budget. The final shift in priorities that we're requesting for 2019 is starting a bridge replacement program for Cook County. The budget includes $118,500 in bridge program reserves to get started on engineering or match funds for eventual bridge replacements here. We're looking at 14 structures that need to be replaced within the next 10 years, only two of which appear in this 2019 project list. So we know that we need to start working ahead for the future of our bridge system to keep those structures suitable and qualified for outside grant sources by getting started on engineering projects. We will continue to keep, seek the outside sources to minimize the impact of our bridge needs, but I don't think it's something that we can go without starting to prepare for in 2019.
And again, part of the impact of that is a number of those bridges, and you might be able to tell us off the top of your head, are on county roads rather than CASA routes, which means that there aren't state construction funds available for those bridge replacement programs. And by seeking some of those outside grants and having matching funds available, we can minimize the levy impact significantly potentially.
Thank you, Lisa. Thanks for all of your work on preparing the budget as usual every year. Also, a big thanks to the Highway staff for their commitment to supporting the department's critical services on a day-to-day basis. And thank you for the opportunity to serve as a Cook County engineer. If there are any questions, we did bring some information with us, or we can answer them at the Budget Committee meeting next week. Anyone who might be listening later on could give us a call at the Highway Department, 387-3014, or direct any questions through Administrator Cashwell as well.
Thank you. This is so plain. It's so easy to follow. Very good report. So we'll have questions or comments, starting with Commissioner Dushaw.
The mini excavator payoff, is that the same one that we've had for two or three years now?
We actually just got it at the end of last year. And there was a commitment made at that time to rent it at a discounted rate for this entire year and then to do a payout.
Wasn't one we've had for three years?
No, no. We typically get a different rental every year. And in fact, we actually had a different rental through the entire active maintenance season last year, and then brought this one in at the end of last year and maybe used it for a few weeks. But the reason for that was actually quite strategic. By going with that particular unit on the 2017 contract prices, we were able to stay in the mid $60,000 range versus over, I believe it was 80,000 or 82,000 on the 2018 state contract for the same unit. So we stayed, it was between 15,000 and 17,000. I'd have to go back and check the records.
Our original, our original contract was to carry the equipment that we used in 2016 and pay that out in 2017, and we deferred that, and they honored that, and they held our lease rates for 2017. There's never a new unit that this year we're going to pay out. It did, December, November? It came very late last year.
It came very late.
It was at the very end of the construction season last year.
And then the equipment rental, that's 329 or 330?
It's a couple of units typically, and that's just a standing budget line item, and it is the large excavator. And then this year, that would also include the mini excavator. So in 2019, the mini excavator rental does go away, and it should just be the large excavator unless some other unusual need arises, such as potentially a roller. We have rented one of those for a short term if there's a specific project need or something like that.
Commissioner Duca? Thank you for keeping self-shore in the budget. If any of you aren't aware, it was supposed to be this year. So I'm on the shortlist with some people. Sorry, things happen, but it will get done hopefully. But thank you. And this is a great presentation, and we'll get the copy of the third one. Do you know where? Should be in that folder somewhere.
It's in the book?
It's in the book. Perfect. I missed that, I missed that big sheet without all of us being spread open. That's because we closed it. I know. I'll read it later. We just got our books partway through the meeting this morning. Thank you for all the work that both of you have done on this budget. Commissioner Busher?
Well, thank you so much to you two, especially and the staff, in trying to look at where we can have some savings. I often feel that if you're going to go looking for saving any costs, you look at the big ticket items, because they may have the less impact over time, even though sometimes it's necessary to increase those big budgets. And I think from what I've been hearing as a Commissioner, as well before when I served on the Highway Advisory Committee, I also want to thank Commissioner Dushaw for his work on this as well, because I know he's made some suggestions. So I think these cost savings are timely, and I think they reflect some of the concerns that have been ongoing about why we're doing what we're doing, and you're taking a serious look at that. That's just really good management and planning, so thank you. The results are apparent, and they're very positive, I think, to indicate where we can look to maybe change things when we have a change in the leadership in that department. So thank you, Kristin, for joining us. I really trust your professional background and commitment.
So I had to do a little drive the other day, and the bridge work is done at Ski Hill. Not completed probably, but you're going to need to drive across it. And that was projected to be done in August.
Yay.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
I know, yes. Commissioner?
Thank you, Commissioner. I just, and this is very impressive in its summary and its simplicity, but I know it's not simple. It just takes all those complex details and puts it in a very usable, user-friendly approach. And I appreciate the context of history and then the context of the whole. It helps me see the big picture in both directions, which is really awesome, in that there's some cost savings, and then that's been really well explained. And that there's chlorides back in the budget, seems like it's the right thing to do. And it's fabulous. And that we're, you know, backed up with all the details. We can dig into it to our hearts and to expect. Content, but I really appreciate having this big picture approach. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much. There's no other questions? Appreciate all the work, too. Yeah. Awesome. All right, so Brady's on the agenda now.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Our first item is to ask you to approve a date and time for the Canvas Board after the election. The dates allowed are August 16 or 17. I'd ask to set it early on the 16th at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioner's Room. And then also, the members of the Canvas Board are two members of the County Board. It's not required, we need three for quorum. So two members of the County Board, the Mayor, the City Court Administrator, and myself. We need three. So if there's any one of you that would attend, you could appoint them today. Otherwise, if you have a member of the public in mind, we could approve them. Otherwise, it just gives me the authority to appoint someone. I have a couple of people in mind, so.
That puts a fine backup, suspenders and belts.
So a motion to, ask for a motion to approve the date is August 16 at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioner's Room.
Okay, so we have the motion. A motion to approve the date, 16th at 10:00 a.m.
Support.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Then do you need a motion for the person?
If there's any of you that can make that date and wish to come, otherwise, give me the authority to make an appointment.
But it has to be a County Board who's not up for election?
Right.
Which would be either Myron or I. And Myron's covering a meeting for me because I will be gone, so that's your answer.
I could do it. I'm not up for it.
You're not up. You're up, but you're not up.
Yeah, so I could do it.
Thank you, Jan.
Thanks, Jan. Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, well, I'm going to make a motion.
Motion to approve, Jan.
Okay, thank you.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Jan, you're approved.
Okay. Sorry. That's a G, John, or Jan, you're approved.
I know, I'm taking the eshop.
There you go.
I think I go to 9C, the state in lieu. We just traditionally record this to you. It's not an approval. It's recognition of the state gives us each year. This is on our, obviously, our state tax forfeit land. And last year, as you remember, we were shorted on this fund. We had to reassess it. They were not pleased with our, they're not agreeable to our method. And then they chose, in the meantime, they chose a number that was not reflective of either a reassessment or at all. So they corrected that, and we got the $56,000 in the spring to correct for last year. And this year, not only does this reflect that correction in the assessment, but the state also increased the $1 per acre amounts for two of the categories on here, from $1.50 to $2, which resulted in another $67,000 of increase. So now, instead of 250,000, we're at 274,000 that we've received this year already and will be receiving next year. So that will be reflected in the budget for 2019. And then 9B is a budget amendment, which is, this change in the state and lieu tax is now reflected in there. So the two major changes, they're major, so I wanted to do an amendment to reflect. So 2018 reflected closely what we were actually doing. So this is the final union contracts and the comp study and all that came together shortly after the end of the year, and then it took us some time to calculate all the final results. And then we were hoping to get the state and lieu taxes adjustments, and hoping to get the federal adjustment, too. We still don't have the information on that. So I say, well, let's just go ahead and amend what we have. And know if we find out more later on the federal, we may amend again. That may not happen. So I would ask this approval, so this included the First Amendment we did in February, which was a small adjustment to ARC, but largely it was including E911, which had just been amended, and that's a large budget. So that just increased revenue and expenses. So you see what we amended there. And then you see this proposed amendment, no change to the levy, we can't change the levy. So what this does is just changes the fund balance. So we had a use of fund balance, we were expecting to add to the fund balance, just over 200,000. And with all the changes and the including of the state lieu and tax, now we'll just use a small amount of the fund balance, 57,000. Instead of putting in, we have to take out a little bit. So I'd ask for approval of that change. This reflects all the changes that Kristin and Lisa were talking to regarding their budgets, so this will, now their 2018 budget will reflect all of the federal changes, and so will the services, and so will the general fund. All comparison purposes.
So first of all, any questions or comments before we do a motion? Commissioner?
I would just like to, I've mentioned it before, but in regards to payment of taxes from the state, I am a member of the club, Northern Combs Land Use Conservation Board. John Angaro is working with us, as well as through the Arrowhead Counties Association, to help Cook County deal with the $67,497 increase. It's very much appreciated, but when you look at an increase of 50 cents per acre, the formula that they use to arrive at this number is really been changed significantly for Cook County, because for that one year, we had that change in assessment that was significantly lower. But the issue is that this increase of $67,000, if that, if our, it seems like our assessed values are going to go up somewhat, but we're going to be penalized for five years now on that. I guess you'd look at it as penalized. Whereas if you did this every one year or two years, more than likely, we'd be getting more pill payment for that year three, four, and five. So I really appreciate the work and support. It's very rare that, they're really targeting Cook County for their efforts that they felt they were dealt with unfairly, so it's good to have that behind us, as well as the skills of the lobbyist, John Angaro, to try to get that changed up in the legislature. So I don't know if there's any questions on that, but wanted to elaborate that again.
Thank you.
As you say, we may have been helped, let's say, relatively more than some other counties by that kind of change.
Yeah, some other counties got significant increases, yeah. I mean, a million, I think. So the whole idea is to get that readjusted more frequently to our advantage, because the year that they based this on was really not a good year for us on the assessment.
Any other comments or questions?
I just had a question about the net effect of fund balance. I originally thought it was the 57,000 plus the 222, but it's 222 minus the 57.
No, it's.
Okay, so my original thought was correct. So the net effect is about 280,000.
Right, I understand correctly.
Okay. Minus fund balance that we originally intended to.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
In the end, because of the state money, I mean, the federal money, we still don't know the category, we likely offset that.
Right.
Regardless of what type it is. It may go to the Highway Department, or to the general fund, but it's probably offset that anyway.
Okay.
One, that's one time.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, so I hear a motion?
I support. Second it begrudgingly.
Any further comments or questions? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign, pass. Thank you, Brady, on all of that.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Moving on to Administrator's update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of items, and as always, I'll take questions if you have them afterwards. Brady Powers handed out your budget workbook, and our intention is to make those materials available on our budget website as soon as we can. Our next Budget Committee meeting is Tuesday next week. If I have these materials, they're available now, up on the website by then. I need to let Brady and his staff get through the election before we commit to getting back those materials up there. back those materials up there. The, the only comment I would make that you, that you haven't seen, you just approved a budget amendment for 2018, and next week you will see, perhaps before that, you will see the summary of where we're at with preliminary requests for this year from our department heads. And what I will tell you is the last three years, um, the first blush on that summary budget has shown a necessary levy increase of 27, 28, 30 percent. And I will tell you that this year's working number is a single-digit number, and that it's gonna be much easier for us to meet, uh, the goals that we set last year when we, when we did take the bite and say we're gonna balance the budget, so next year we have a much more sustainable number. So, just taking all of the staff, all of the department requests, plugging them in, taking a look at what we have available, we're already in a single digit in a work of this situation. So, to that effect, the work that we did last year had the intended consequences. I don't wanna, I don't wanna give that number out yet because we haven't had a chance to review. The preliminary budget submitted by Health and Human Services came in on Friday, and Brady and I have not had a chance to sit down with Allison and Lori to review that one, do that before we share that number. But, um, I think that's all very good news. Agenda management software that we agreed to purchase, we will be doing training, implementation schedule, reviewing with the company on Thursday this week. Monday next week, the primary users will be getting their individual training on how to, how to use the system. And over the course of the month of September, we will be transitioning our agendas for the commissioner meetings, for the human service meetings, and all for the planning and zoning meetings over to the new agenda management system. They'll still be available by a link through the county website, and it's just gonna look different. And the format of the agenda is gonna look a little bit different, but part of the implementation is also giving them all of our materials so that they can make it all fairly consistent. So, hopefully by October 1st, we're fully using that new system for all of those agendas. There was a comment about, uh, this morning at the beginning of the meeting about the cost of the Hovland Public Works facility and about the necessity for the Hovland Public Works facility, and I would wanna make a correction, that thankfully, we have not received an OSHA compliance letter indicating that we have to shut part of that facility down, there is no letter. What we know is that there are components to that building that would not meet specifications if we had an inspection. So, us planning to update or improve or correct those is, is, is an important part of us managing, um, that facility. The primary reason for that facility is that the age of that type of construction in that facility has all lived its useful life. The design of a new facility is to protect the equipment, to provide a safe place for our employees, and to provide a safe place to operate services in the east end of the county, uh, for a long time into the future. And, uh, one of the primary reasons that we rejected all the bids and went forward is that we bid at a point in time this year where we didn't get any local bidders. And we really do believe that we're gonna be able to come in much closer to the anticipated expense for, uh, for that project. I was just reviewing an updated opinion of probable cost from the Meyer Group, and they're still showing $950,000 for the building, right, which is significantly more than the 850 that was shown a number of years ago. The problem is, is that there's demolition and site work and architectural fees and all of that, so we're still showing a full program of about 1.2 to 1.25 million dollars for that project. That's the amount of money that we still have set aside from the bottom that we issued to make that happen. But, we really believe that we can deliver a reasonable project by bidding, probably in February 2019. So, I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood where we're at on that. Uh, the last item I would bring up is, uh, the town hall budget meetings. Um, we've got schedules, um, for all the districts except for, for District One. One of the questions that I would ask, I'll just review what I have so far and make sure that that's correct. Uh, District Two and Three are gonna, are going to plan to do one together, uh, at the community center on September 10th. District Four is gonna be a fire hall one on September 4th, and District Five will be a birch grove school on September 5th. Now, at this point in time, all the meetings are scheduled to start at a different time.
Good.
Wonderful. Well, we're individual, I wait.
For the, for the purpose of clarity and messaging, I'm asking if, if we wanna be consistent in the time, or if you're, if, if, if you're, you made those choices for a particular reason. We have one starting at five, one starting at six, and one starting at 6:30. I believe last year, we started all of them at six o'clock.
Sounds good.
Let's go to six o'clock.
I was thinking about working people who drive into the west end, you know, making it a half hour later, that was the reason.
Let's go to six.
Good, thank you. Do six. I didn't pick the time, I said, what do you think?
I'm pretty sure they were all at six o'clock last year, and if they're consistent, then we can, then the proceeding, um, for these budget meetings is simply these different locations, all meetings start at six o'clock, it becomes a very simple message, people don't get confused about what time to show up in which district.
Go ahead.
So, if that's okay, I'll change them all to six o'clock.
Uh, speaking of showing up in which district in combined meetings, District Four, Mid Trail Hall, that doesn't mean that you can't come to town and do the two and three one together. You don't have to drive up the trail if you don't want to, but you should, 'cause there's great restaurants up there if you're hungry, right before you come to the meeting.
Madam Chair, that was all I had, no further questions?
Okay.
So, what dates do you get?
The fourth, the fifth, and the 10th.
Fourth is.
The fourth is the Tuesday after, the fourth is, is District Four.
Okay.
Four, four.
Four, four, okay.
The fifth is District Five.
Five, five.
Did that happen intentionally?
And District Two and Three is the 10th, so it, we had always planned to do these between today and the 15th of September. From the practical scheduling standpoint, we've got, uh, the policy, the AMC policy conference is the 12, 13, 14. And to get the materials out, we were, last year we did it on the same schedule, we had all the meetings within, between Labor Day and the policy conference.
Okay, so we'll do District One on the sixth.
Okay.
Okay. At Hovland?
On the September 1st? Sorry.
Of a long week.
One on one?
Okay, uh, September 6th and the town hall.
The sixth, the six. Six, the six.
Very good. Okay. Commissioner Concerns, Reports, Updates, Notes. Commissioner?
So, I will do an update with Soil and Water, and I hopefully do this with you every month. Elena and I kinda talked about, um, making sure that you all know what's going on with Soil and Water, because there are a lot of things moving, and I don't know if any of you heard or not. Uh, we did renew the contract with Michaela. She was originally hired as part of a grant funding, and just so you know, in Soil and Water, everybody's on a grant fund cycle. The levy portion for them is less than 35,000 a year, so that staff in there couldn't operate without funding their own jobs by finding grants and funding, fund their jobs, if that all makes sense. And so, we do have resources and funding and grants that will keep Michaela, so she is permanent until she isn't, which is if we run out of grant funding for her, and she's aware of that. So, I don't know if she's more nervous or not, before she knew for sure she had two years, and now she's on a case-by-case basis. So, the things that we have completed in Soil and Water, there'll be a lot of grants and funding that will be closed out and cleared. This year, there are community partner shoreline projects that will be done, the Poplar River watershed will be done. Our meeting was the first week of this month, so it might be done at this point. Reservation River, Moose Mystery, and then there's a capacity grant for Lake Superior monitoring. If, if you're not aware, our Soil and Water does a lot of the lake monitoring and works with the volunteers on that. So, that's being done, the Envirethon goes through that, the community outreach and education Take a Kid Fishing goes through our Soil and Water offices, they do newspaper inserts, they just completed a shoreline brochure, so if you get a chance, since we're closer, swing in that office and get a copy, it's a beautiful two-page. There's more youth outreach on the watershed, and then the Gramary Stormwater and Village of Ditch project, Soil and Water is working with the city on that, an erosion hazard map. And then, um, just a lot of education outreach, and we do, uh, WTIP updates regularly, someone from the board goes in and does that. And then they do an annual tree sale, wetland conservation, uh, offer technical assistance on a lot of projects, and then they worked with the, with Tim on the buffer law. So, we will try to keep you updated, since we only see Elena, she doesn't update approximately annually. But, I talked about how during Commissioner Concerns, a lot of times I don't have a lot to say or update, and I think this is an opportunity for the committees that we sit on, to let you all know and let the public know what's going on, and there's a lot of stuff that goes on in that Soil and Water office, so they are very busy folks in there, so if you get a chance, pop your head in and say thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Bobby?
Well, when Arvis was talking this morning, I don't know where the info comes from, I'm a little confused on the, the golf course.
It's on golf course, it's the same.
I think the three employees is the Gunflint Hills Golf Course.
Yeah.
But the Gun, the Gun, of course, mergers, whatever she was talking about. I don't know where that's coming from.
Because that's the first I heard of that. Then I had some concerns from some other people about, um, there seems to be a seriously lack of childcare in the, you know, people just cannot find it.
I've even hit the, um, Business North, um, magazine or newspaper, um, this month. So, it's not just Cook County, but it's a serious, serious issue. But it's, it's shrunk like about 50, by 50 percent in the last few months.
How many did we lose in Gramary? Or we lost by?
Right. No, it's dramatic.
There is someone new in the community that's looking to open a daycare, so it's, it's ever adjusting and fluctuating and constantly moving.
I could maybe comment, um, we didn't meet this month, but we're meeting next month, and we have, we're continuing the Childhood Coalition, uh, monthly meetings, and it's childcare providers that are home providers, as well as the Y, and, uh, we have some county people involved, uh, from Public Health and Human Services. I'm volunteering to be on it, it's not one of my assignments, and, and, as well as, uh, the school has taken some leadership on this, but, yeah, it is, 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 you, I know a couple of them came up with, um, uh, the Lynn Shields closing, and, uh, I talked to Emily Marshall at Y there, and we're trying to get some of those into the Y program, even though it's a little difficult, because of our, you know, you have to have so many, so many places to make it cost-effective, and we're trying to fit some of those in. But, yeah, it's an ongoing issue. We got ahead of the game a little bit when we opened it up at the Y, and, uh, so now we're a site, which is, means we have more flexibility in the future. But funding is still an issue, and, and the big issue that I think we're having is, we still have some, um, families there that can't afford, uh, you know, childcare, and, but they have to have childcare to get a job, and that's a requirement that most of them up there, so it's a conundrum. And, uh, so I think the efforts that, uh, we're looking at is, some foundations are, are willing to, to help us and, with that issue, but we have to look at a sustainable model, so they're just not gonna fund something forever. So, that's, that's the real trick, how do we, how do we go forward? I know I'd worked a lot with this a couple of years ago in getting it going into Y and, and had met with the chamber and so forth, and I think, you know, we're, we're committed, I think we have the capability, that we just, we're small enough, and we gotta look at the resources, I think, uh, to address your concern, Bobby, that, uh, we, we shouldn't have any young family or child, uh, that needs to be in childcare or wants to be in childcare. Uh, we just gotta figure out how to, how to fund that. And so, I'll put out a plea that if anyone has any ideas, anyone that wants to support that, that, uh, we should do it, 'cause we have, I can't remember the last number, we're down on our waitlist now, but at one time the waitlist was over 30. And, and, and now they're having this issue in other counties, so it's, it's, I'm on some boards all over the area, and it's been a concern all over, the northeast Minnesota as well, it's all over the state. The state has, to some extent, uh, part of the issues, the requirements from the state, uh, and there was some easing on restrictions, but then we had the big case in the cities where, uh, someone is abusing and, and making money off of, uh, the system, so it's, at the state level, it's, it's sort of a mixed thing, we, I don't know if we're gonna get any help in the legislature, because they're saying we all wanna fund this because of, you know, some problems with it. At least that's the legislature, but, um, so I, I just thought I'd share that. I think, for Cook County, I, I, I'm optimistic that I think we can figure this out, which is gonna take us some time, and it's gonna take some collaboration and cooperation. And, uh, I think, you know, we as a county, uh, say that it's to our benefit sometimes to deal with these things as well. It's a whole idea of people going off the cliff, and childcare is an issue, so I think, I hope we can take that on and, and deal with it, um, and the county.
Anything else? Yes, Commissioner Duker?
You know, with Bobby's questions, there's a lot of areas, and we have not had a meeting with our partners that we used to do on a regular basis, and I would really like us to bring our partners in. If we had been sitting down with the city and the hospital and the school, you might be on top of the game, maybe not, I don't know, but, I mean.
We know where.
Yeah, like, I know where they're at with the golf course and what's going on with the childcare, the schools having any issues, so I don't know who's responsible for that, but.
Who coordinates it?
We don't know.
It's been whoever the party is that's of turn is supposed to be doing it, but, you know, I've sat down and talked to the mayor a couple of times, yeah, yeah, I'll put it together, we should really do this, and we just keep, it's whatever the letter, I think we should make it a priority.
Should try to do it this fall. Anything else? I do have, um, a meeting on Monday in Duluth, and it's also the aquatic invasive species meeting, and I looked on our to-do list, and I'm, I'm the alternate, and, so I don't know how that happened, I, well, I filled in for Frank, so I guess I just kinda said, okay, I'll do it, but I cannot be there on Monday from 1:00 to 3:00 here, so if anyone would be so interested in finding out about our aquatic invasives.
Who's the primary? There's no primary, you're the primary?
I'm primary and the alternate.
Well, thanks, Jamie, for being two people.
It's the one time I can't make it, otherwise I've always been able to go.
And it's here on Monday from 1:00 to 3:00.
If anyone wants to go to the AEO meeting on Wednesday, it's in Virginia at 1:00 o'clock, I can't be two places at once, I gotta be in Duluth.
Who's your alternate?
I think it's Jenny or Jan.
You should look at who the alternate is, 'cause that's.
That is a fairly large board, so, the quorum, except one time I had to go because I had to be the quorum. But, I have not been going to all of them, because I've been doubling up with other, I'm, I've just had the same day in different cities.
What time is it on Wednesday?
Noon, I believe.
Should look at who the alternate is, 'cause a lot of candidates can't vote if you're not, unless you have, so.
See who the alternate is, I might be able to work it out since I've already been to Duluth.
Oh, gee.
I can cover the aquatic one on Monday for you, since there's no one else to.
Okay, thank you.
I'll put that to you.
Yeah, let me know.
Yeah, um, I'm sorry, I can't remember, I think it's either Jan or Jenny.
I can look that too.
I think it's you.
Me? Okay. Alrighty, so before we end our meeting, we have some anniversaries that Heidi wants to acknowledge.
Very little amount of them, but they're still wonderful. So, we have Wes Higgins at our highway department, he hit his five-year anniversary. In Molly's office, we have Diana Mitchell, one year. In the highway department maintenance two position, Michael Kinderman. Upstairs in public health, we have Grace Burchard, 11 years. And then Lisa was in our assessor's office for a year, and she's now been our parks and trails for two years, so we have a total of three years with Lisa, and it's good that that's on there, because when I
that's on there, because when I was thanking our assessor's office for all their work, I forgot about Lisa, so I have to doubly thank Lisa, 'cause I forgot about her at one point, so I'm sorry, Lisa. Thank you for your service.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we will have a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. Oh, okay, thank you.